We're gonna call the meeting to order at 6:39 PM, Monday, July 20th. I want to welcome everybody to the Holyoke School Committee. And this time, I'm gonna do it right in which I am gonna notify everybody that I'm hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording is being made of the meeting, and the meeting is being livestreamed and run live on the city's community TV channel, FoxCast, and also Facebook Live in Spanish interpretation. Liz, roll call, please.
Mayor Moore.
President.
Ms. Lefay.
Present.
Mr. Sheehan.
President.
Mr. Brunel, I mean, Ms. Brunel.
She's here.
She's here, okay. Ms. Tensley-Williams, not here. Mrs. Burks.
Present.
Ms. Feliciano-Sins.
Present.
Mr. Willihen. Mr. Colomar is here. Mr. Kushein is not here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'll just mute myself.
Well, pretend, I guess, now that there is a flag. So I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, good evening, everyone. First, I want to welcome Dr. Alberto Vazquez Matos. This is your first school committee meeting with the Holyoke School Committee. I know that we received about 24 public comments, Liz.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three, twenty-three, okay. So I have them here on my screen. Liz, you want to go ahead and read the first seven? And I could, you know, like, me, you, Rebecca can kind of help one another out and get these public comments read out loud.
I would like nothing better than that, Mildred.
You're awesome, thank you.
So the first comment is from Noelise Torres. And her comment is, "This car graduation is ridiculous to me. I have parents that have trouble being near each other. So this, quote, 'one car per senior,' end quote, is unacceptable because I have that going on, and I have siblings and grandparents that wanted to see me cross the stage. If the school district can manage to open up schools in August, then us seniors should be able to have a prom and the other senior events and our graduation at our school that we were promised. All these broken promises and disappointments is making us seniors give up and not even show up to our graduations, our big memorable day. If this was the case, why didn't we just have it on the day we were supposed to graduate, which was June 7th? There's so many of us that left to a different country or across the state for college or had delays just for this to happen. Personally, I will not be attending this car graduation because I want my family, that played a big role in my life, to be there. Also, we still haven't got answers on yearbooks or what they are going to do with the fundraiser money that we all put hard work in for. It's just so unorganized and unprofessional. I'd rather have my diploma mailed to me and my yearbook and whatever else you and your staff team has made for us because there's no way we raised about $1,000 or more for nothing to be made for us. That's even if I got a diploma made for me because that wouldn't be the first time I didn't receive something from the school. May I say, I didn't get a lawn sign the day all the staff members passed them out. I had to wait four to five days for Mahoney to bring me one. I didn't get a senior banner made for me, and I sent an email to Mahoney and my counselor. Only my counselor reached out to me and waited four weeks just for her to say, "It's too late to be made for me." I was very outraged and upset, and so was my parents. I still want that to be made for me. I don't care what the guidelines are. If every senior got one made for them, I should get one made for me, too. Make it equal to all your seniors. At the end of the day, we need an apology and answers."
Thank you.
The second comment is from Kimberly Boucher. "I'm writing on behalf of the graduating class of 2020, and for my daughter, mostly. As a parent of a single child in the school system, it is very disheartening, pardon me, heartbreaking, not only to hear..." Pardon me again, "not only to her, but as a family who will not be able to see our child walk as promised. I understand completely the efforts made by Dr. Mahoney and the staff for cap and gown pickup and the dates planned in the future, well in advance for prom and graduation. They were put out in such a timely manner that there should be no reason other than the new receivership that's involved now. Drake would have wanted nothing else for these kids. As other towns have proven, there is a way to make these ceremonies happen. These kids worked tireless to raise money we needed for these senior functions. Where is that all being applied now? They purchased prom gowns, suits for an event that they'll never get to see. Now they have cap and gowns that they all look forward to customizing their own, and it's a loss because now for a five-minute walk across the stage and to sit in their cars. You can do better with this, and on behalf of all the class of 2020, you should at least make effort to continue what was already embedded in these kids' heads." Comment number three is Maria Velazquez. "As a parent of a senior, I'm extremely upset with the decision made about graduation. I understand the circumstances of this epidemic, but to do what every other school has done and how to offer the same to our kids when they have been waiting this long to walk the stage and go to prom, not only is that taken, but now they can't even walk on their own ground is sad in itself. We waited this long just to do the same as the rest, and not only that, not all family and friends can share this moment. I'm highly disappointed with the decision and, to be honest, hurt for my child that wanted this long. I, as a parent, disagree with the decision and hope a change can be made, at least in their home."
Thank you.
"I want to tell you how unhappy I am to hear this. After all the promises to these kids and to renege, once again, it's wrong. East Long Meadow just had theirs. There is a way to do this, it just seems no one wants to make the effort. If people don't like the way it is set up outdoors or still feel unsafe, that is most definitely their right. Then they should stay home. It's not fair for the rest of the kids. These kids work hard all year long, my grandson, who graduates with this class. They look forward to class day and their prom and most definitely graduation day. Girls have bought their dresses. I know one student who couldn't enter the military because he didn't have his diploma. So what he waited for, a drive-by. They could have done this sooner than... And what about awards and scholarships? Tuition is due any time now, and parents don't know where their kid stands. Again, waited for what, the mailman? Could have been done sooner than. This is all very disappointing to the students and parents. This virus has destroyed enough in our lives, and now you want to go back on your promise to these kids again because of when it can be worked out with some effort. Great way to send off your students. Wonderful lesson, people, wake up. Is this what you wanted them to remember, really? I am sure this will go nowhere, like everything else in this city is going, but at least I can say I tried. I wish more people would speak up." Yolanda Rivas. "Hello, my name is Yolanda, and I am the parent of Angelis Matos, a high school senior at Hoyok High School. I've been informed that the promise to conduct a regular guidance ceremony has been postponed and scheduled to be conducted as a drive-through. This has brought much sadness to my child, and I am sure many more, as these students have been promised over and over again to have a regular ceremony. Listening to many of my child's classmates indicating how sad they are and hearing them state they may not even attend as the drive-through could have been done months ago and prom dresses with the excitement to attend prom. They have been purchased and now prom is canceled as well. Totally understanding the COVID situation and the proper measures that need to be taken into consideration, I would still urge the ceremony to stand as a regular ceremony rather than a drive-through. Angelis, as many more, have been through a lot in the last four years, and this moment means a lot to them. Thank you in advance."
Liz, thank you so far for doing those. I know Devin also has access for these, so I'm gonna give you a break. And Devin, if you want to read the next six of them, and then Rebecca can go ahead and end us.
Liz, the next one you had was Alpita, correct?
Yes.
Okay. From Alpita, "My name is Alpita, I am an HHS senior. I think it is ridiculous that we are the only school that can't have graduation at their home turf. Not only that they are using coronavirus as an excuse for it, I've seen many schools have normal or even car graduations with everyone there, just everyone with social distancing and wearing masks. I find it absolutely unprofessional that he constantly promised us so much that never actually happened. Also putting off graduation till now and saying that was the only way we could get a formal graduation, knowing many people would be there because they were entering the Air Force or the Marines, et cetera. Dr. Mahoney and the Board of Education has never actually cared to hear our opinions, so it's about time. I feel like we should let us have ours at HHS and bring at least two cars. I also feel like we should have been told details ahead of time if this was the case. He posts stuff on Instagram but half-explained. How is it gonna work if they keep it this way? Is each student going to get specific time to show up? Is it alphabetical? What is it gonna look like? Our fundraiser money that came out of my pocket because they threatened to keep my diploma and cap and gown and said I wouldn't be allowed at graduation if I didn't pay? The money that was going to go to our prom, that's not happening anymore. I would like a refund, and I know all my HHS seniors will agree with me. Thank you for your time."
Thank you.
From Catherine Herndon. "I saw a post about parents being upset about drive-through graduation and wanted to let you know I'm really happy about it. As a nurse, I believe this is a really good decision. At the cap and gown pickup and the senior parade, students were not social distancing at all, and I think it would have been the same at graduation. I know people are upset and that these seniors are really facing disappointment after disappointment, but it would have been so risky. In addition, faculty in higher-risk categories will be able to attend drive-through. I am very relieved. Thank you, Catherine Herndon, RN, mother of Patricia Herndon, class of 2020."
Thank you.
From Joanna Rodriguez. "Not sure if this will help motivate the school department. Long Meadow was able to hold their graduation successfully while practicing social distancing. All the best, Joanna Rodriguez." Follow-up email. "I know I was very vague in my prior information. All of this has been stressful for many, no exceptions on your end. I get it. I think the constant yes-no silent mode has many parents and students in an emotional roller coaster that, quite frankly, they are sick of and want to get off but can't. The school committee needs to make up their minds whether or not they truly want a sense of normalcy back. I have another child preparing to go back in September. It can't say it's safe at the end of August, but it's not at the beginning, especially when it's to celebrate the end of an accomplishment for many students. Many of, for whom despite their struggles, fought against all odds and won. Keep the celebration, HCC, their field is even bigger, and it creates opportunities that ensure social distancing limits are kept. Limit the attendees to household members only if need be, but don't take one more thing from them. COVID-19 has done enough of that already." From Bailey DeGrasse. "I have worked so hard over the past four years to achieve success and all of my goals at Hoyok High School. I made the high honor roll all four years, every single quarter. I made the National Honor Society, and I am even the business club president. I am now denied a prom, senior banquet, student versus faculty game, class day, graduation, and many more events and activities. There is no reason as to why an outdoor in-person graduation ceremony cannot be held on Roberts Field on August 2nd. We have already lost so much due to the coronavirus. Please don't give us this for graduation, too. All of the money Business Club has raised won't be for our class. It will get right-handed to another class. Not to mention prom and the senior banquet are canceled, and people have already bought their attire for those nights. What was even the point of purchasing a cap and gown if I'm not able to actually graduate the right way? What was the point of hosting the countless amounts of fundraisers to raise money to go on field trips? I feel like I wasted the past four years of my life, and giving us this for a graduation is not anywhere close to good enough. More than five schools in western Massachusetts were able to host in-person graduations, so why aren't we? This is absolutely ridiculous, and I think we, as the class of 2020, deserve way more than that. Thank you, Bailey DeGrasse."
Thank you.
From Julie Legoy. "Graduates of 2020 deserve something better. Our schools have been able to do so. Other schools have been able to do so. With a limited amount of people, the kids should be able to walk the stage and collect their diplomas as promised. As a parent of a previous graduates, not all graduates were held on the field. Due to weather conditions, each child had limited tickets for guests to come. I feel some graduates will just request mailing their diploma versus drive-by. Hopefully, this can turn out to be the best day for them." From Jack Shay. "First, thank you all for your hard work you've put in for the class of 2020. It's very much appreciated and does not go unnoticed. I'm emailing you to voice my dissatisfaction with the decisions administration has made regarding HHS graduation and prom. The decisions recently made by Hoyok High School administration were made for the better of our community are unacceptable. All Hoyok seniors, including myself, are extremely disappointed with the recent announcements made on Dr. Mahoney's Instagram, including the complete cancellation of prom and the change of graduation venue. This is largely due to the lack of communication with administration and the false promises they have made to us. For months, we've operated on the belief that one day we'd walk the stage with our fellow classmates, but it seems as if the administration has only given up on that promise. The Hoyok High School student body will unanimously work towards a physical onstage graduation regardless of the precautions necessary, and we wish that administration will work with us towards that goal."
Thank you.
From Morgan Reardon. "Hi there, I am a senior from the class of 2020 and wanted to reach out in regards to the graduation, which is planning on being held for us seniors. I am outraged, saddened, disappointed, and so many other emotions about this. Us seniors have all worked so hard and deserve to have a graduation where we walk the actual stage at our high school. As a previous athlete, I am fully aware that the HHS football field/terf is one of the biggest, if not the biggest, terrfs in western Mass. Holding a graduation on the turf six feet apart with our classmates is what we have been long waiting for since the beginning of May. We were told the standards of all of this would be followed by plans made by Mahoney and his team. Those have gone to waste, and us seniors are being let down once again. If graduation is not being held in person or I'm not able to walk the stage, I will not be attending. The staff and administration got all of our hopes up of having graduation in August, and we have been looking forward to this just to find out through an Instagram post it won't even be held at our high school but at a city college campus. My parents are also disappointed and outraged by this. Not to mention, I was also the editor-in-chief of the yearbook for the class of 2020, and ever since orders have gone in and money was collected, I have been informed nothing from the teachers and staff involved, and no one has heard anything about yearbooks. When I emailed the teachers, I got no response from anyone but one who then proceeded to ask another teacher if he knew anything. It is ridiculous and tough to inform seniors who have been constantly asking me, "When are yearbooks coming in?" And I tell them, "I have no idea." Yet when we ordered them back in May, we were told they would be in by June. Thank you for hearing me out. Please let me know if you need anything else. I will be glad to speak up." From Megan. "May I ask why graduation has been changed from an in-person graduation to a drive-through ceremony? After months of being told that the system would do everything in their power to hold traditional graduations, as traditional as it can be nowadays, they are told it will now be a drive-through at HCC. Why can't it be held at the football field, even with a limited number of guests? These kids have taken hit after hit, and at this point are saying, 'Why bother?'" Respectfully, Megan Shay, proud parent of a class of 2020 graduates."
Thank you.
From Kelly Kennedy. "I have no idea what has changed since Dr. Zright has left, but the seniors were told that they would have their prom and senior night. A lot of people worked very hard to ensure that as many senior activities as possible would happen. I am confused as to how it has changed. Give our students what they have earned. Thank you." From Jaleen Troche Rivera. "Dear Hoyok Public School and Hoyok High School, I am a senior of the class of 2020, and I am very disappointed to hear how we're going to have our graduation. You guys have given us a graduation in June 7th that same way, but now we waited this long for that. I understand that it's hard to give us a real graduation with the coronavirus, and I'm not trying to sound ungrateful, but at this point, I just want my diploma and I want my yearbook. There have been very little communication to us seniors about where all our fundraising money is going to now since you canceled our senior events last minute. We just want some closure and answers, as well as want a nice graduation and our yearbooks. Please do something about this. At least let us have multiple cars for just one senior for our families can see us graduation. Some people aren't going because their parents are separated and won't be in the same car, so now they don't see the point of going if both parents can't go. Sincerely, Jaleen Troche Rivera."
Thank you.
From Letitia Rodriguez. "I am writing because the whole senior class were excited to have proper graduation being held for them, but to our surprise, the graduation is now being held as a caravan graduation. The senior class has waited for this moment their entire life. This is the only opportunity they have to feel some type of normalcy through these trying times. None of the parents or students were contacted about the changing of graduation to address the situation. I would like an explanation as to why this graduation was changed without a proper notification. Sincerely, Letitia Rodriguez." From Genevieve DeShane. "My son is a 2020 graduate. His disappointment is not even the words to describe what he's feeling. He's joining the Marines, and his date for boot camp was moved because graduation was moved." The only and one thing he was looking forward to because everything else was canceled. He was promised to have an in-person graduation, waited to leave, and now it's not happening. He was supposed to leave June 27, 2020. Once again, I cannot emphasize enough the importance of an actual in-person graduation." From Jennifer DeGrasse. "I am a parent of a senior writing about the upcoming graduation on behalf of my senior and the lack of leadership in this administration. Students were promised for months that graduation, prom, and class day would happen. Over and over, videos and emails went out about this still happening. Last week, Hoyok High School staff stated that graduation would be on the field with two people allowed per student. Then this week, a video went out notifying students of yet another change, that it would be a drive-through graduation and not even at their own school. This message should have been given family along with a lengthy apology for stringing students along for months, holding up students entering the military from leave dates and keeping students' hopes up for nothing, for months. Other local school districts have held graduations, i.e. Long Meadow/Grandby, with strict social distancing guidelines. Our school district can do the same. Schools are set to reopen three weeks later, so stating that it cannot happen due to the inability to practice social distancing is an unacceptable answer. Other events were held in this city as well as surrounding cities where masks were worn and barely any social distancing even happened. Those events not shut down nor were participants asked to disperse. I personally know the impact that COVID can have on a family, and I also know the precautions that need to be taken. Graduation is optional, and students who do fear safety concerns can have a diploma mailed to them. Many students have stated that they will not attend a graduation at HCC. My daughter still has pending financial aid requirements because diplomas have not been forwarded. Documentation can be provided of this if necessary. This is unacceptable. Promises were made by the administration, and they need to be honored. Our students deserve better and deserve to have their accomplishments celebrated the appropriate way." From Cassandra Vasquez Rivera. "Hi, my name is Chrissy, and I am one of the seniors at Hoyok High North. I'm going to email Mahoney, but I was told to talk to you. I'm not happy at all with the decisions being made on our senior events. Where does all the money majority of the seniors raised with the candy go to if all the events we were promised are going to be canceled? Also, why let us know now that we won't have a regular graduation and no prom? Most of us already bought dresses and tuxedos that are non-refundable for the prom we were promised. And about graduation, if it was going to be just a little car show, why didn't we just graduate June 7th like we were supposed to? It makes no sense. I don't like liars, and I don't like people messing with what us seniors have worked so hard for. Mahoney promised us we would have all the senior activities, and now he wants us to go tell our families to forget it, that they can't come to graduation. A lot of us already spent so much money in preparation for prom day. If it doesn't change, I'd like a refund on my cap and gown because I'd rather just have a diploma mailed to me at this point if I can't even walk at the school I went to. Thank you for taking time to read out my message. I know I'm not a parent, but my mom only speaks Spanish, and I wanted our voice to be heard." From Roberto Lopez. "I would like an explanation as to why this graduation was changed without proper notification on why the graduation was changed. This was not handled properly. The one thing that we are looking forward to was a graduation. I would really like more communication on this." From Elizabeth Keat. "I feel as though having an outdoor drive-through graduation that had been talked about would be best in regards to the health and safety of the Hoyok community. The guilt that I would feel if I were to catch COVID-19 and spread it to those in the community that I care about would be immense. Those who are upset at missing the point that all it takes is one person to infect us all, this could cause a lot of damage in our own community as well as the larger western Mass community. Sincerely, Elizabeth Keat." From Sal Canata. "Dear school committee members, I'm putting into writing my strong feelings and concerns regarding the Hoyok Board of Health's decision to abruptly dismiss the planning for Hoyok High School graduation and simultaneously crushing the final hopes of our children for a normal conclusion to their high school career. I am asking for the school committee, including Mayor Morse, to advocate on behalf of the children and families to overturn this decision. As a sitting principal in Hoyok, but more importantly, as a parent, resident, and taxpayer, I am disgusted and hurt that we've been planning and delaying events for four months and telling our kids that it's going to happen to only have the class of 2020 receive just one more slap in the face. They've missed spring sports, prom, powder puff, senior banquet, and class day, memories that will not be recreated, and time that cannot be gotten back. Roberts Field is large enough to accommodate students and a limited number of families, and the pre-work has been done to safely host a graduation. Neighboring communities have done this and are following the same state guidelines provided, so why can't Hoyok? My final points that I'd like to make. One, the graduation belongs at Hoyok High, not HCC. Two, our word is our bond, and we promised these kids a lot and delivered nothing. Three, if mental health is a true concern, then provide some normalcy or make efforts to support these kids without inducing more possible trauma. Four, think about this. Nearly everyone you all know experienced normal senior year. Imagine your life without it. Imagine being 18 and working 13-plus years for this culmination only to have it taken away and being absolutely powerless to do anything about it. Five, if there are kids and families who are not comfortable attending, then that's their decision, and they can choose to participate or not. You are officials in an elected capacity who can do something about it. Show these kids you are their advocates. Show them what leadership looks like, and show them that you are willing to take a chance and risk to make graduation happen. In my conclusion, my son Anthony, an athlete and National Honor Society student, will probably be attending... Will probably not be attending regardless... Liz, I can't read the rest of the...
It says, "will not be attending regardless of the final decision or solution."
Unfortunately, he is completely soured and angered by the events of the last several months, which have been very difficult. My wife and I are holding out for a glimmer of hope that if he sees local adults fighting for him and his classmates to make this happen, we will all be able to enjoy he and his friends walking across the stage, and they are celebrated by this community. Respectfully, Sal Canata, 20 Scott Hollow Drive, Hoyok. Dear honorable members of the school committee, I read with great disappointment as Dr. Mahoney announced his changes to the Hoyok High School graduation. Dr. Mahoney talked about how he worked hard... Oh, sorry, this is from James Leahy. "Dr. Mahoney talked about how he worked hard to hold commencement in Roberts Field, but he couldn't make it work. His alternative, drive-by graduation, not even at the high school but at Hoyok Community College. I was surprised at best because on May 29, 2020, he penned a letter to the Hoyok seniors that stated in part, 'So here's the deal. We will have a Hoyok High School graduation ceremony. Line of march, stoles and cords of honor, families present, peers and learned elders speaking, madrigals singing, and band playing, and all kinds of love, love, and love.'" This promise by Dr. Mahoney and what Commissioner Riley shared on graduation guidelines for Sarah This promise by Dr. Mahoney and what Commissioner Riley shared on graduation guidelines for ceremonies. Dear superintendents, charter school leaders, assistant superintendents, secondary school principals, collaborative leaders, leaders of approved special education schools, and private school leaders, high school graduations are an important ceremony in the lives of the graduate and their loved ones. High school graduation ceremonies should proceed with the following schedule and guidelines. Ceremonies held between now and July 18 should be held virtually or in extremely limited other circumstances following safety protocols, i.e. car parades. Ceremonies held beginning July 19 may take place outside under the following standards and assuming the public health data supports the continued opening of our state. Made it clear that our children will be able to cross the stage with cap and gown, smile ear to ear, feeling the largest accomplishment of their young lives is going to take place. It is curious to me that things changed so drastically from May 29 to July 19. We have seen restrictions loosened by the governor. We have seen neighboring communities hold in-person graduations. We have seen class sizes similar to ours. They were able to make adjustments because of COVID-19. Why not have two graduations, one at the North Campus and one at the Dean Campus? Limit the number of people in attendance and livestream through Hoyoke Media for family and friends to watch. There is discussion that our children may not be going back to school in one month to find their desks three feet apart. We cannot figure out how to hold an in-person graduation but yet have children sit in arms-length apart from each other. We, the city, owe it to the seniors to have a graduation, to wear to wear their caps and gowns and to march into Robert Stadium to hail Hoyoke High School. Please reconsider and do the right thing. Sincerely, James Leahy. City Councilor-at-Large, Hoyoke High School Alumni, 1992. And I think
That's it, Devin. You read them all. But that was awesome. You did a great job. Thank you. Okay, so, um.
I'd like to make a motion to go out of order in the agenda to skip down to announcements, which is the graduation topic.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Yes. Mayor Morris? Mayor Morris? I have to talk. Okay. Ms. Lefebvre? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
I can hear you. Did you hear my yes?
No.
Okay, yes. Mr. Shan?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Ms. Tensley Williams not here. Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Wellenhans?
Yes.
Mr. Colomore? I know you'll say yes for this, Mr. Colomore. Mr. Krishan's not here. Listen, since my picture's the only thing being shown on BoxCast, I'm going with the picture, okay? No problem, Liz. Motion passed unanimously. So with that being said, we're going to move to announcements. Hoyoke High School graduation. Now, I just want to remind everybody, if you have any comments or questions, again, please use the raise hand option under the participants. There's an icon there. Also, I failed to mention earlier that if you're not part of the school committee, any other staff members to please take the video off for now and we will have you come back on once once we start discussing your section of the meeting. So with that being said, do I have any comments or questions in regards to graduation or anything about the seniors? Do I see any raise, raise hand icon? But Ms. Burks? Oh, I don't even see it, but go ahead. Oh, I see it now. Go ahead, Ms. Burks. Sorry about that.
So I'm thankful to all the parents and students that did the write-in. You know, and all the public comment that we heard tonight. And I want to say that I've done a lot of investigation into this, had lots of conversations with people. I will say that Dr. V was not aware of some of this stuff that was happening. So, you know, I want to put that to rest in some people's minds that, you know, he was not a part of that decision-making process and I think that's really important for people to understand. So in regards to the graduation, you know, there's a lot of families that have come up with alternate solutions. I think it's really clear that this is unacceptable. It's not what the students want. It's not what the family want and we need to be creative. You know, these people are spot on. This city is a city that is built on traditions. And it's built on the fact that these families are waiting to have the same opportunity for their children to walk the stage like their parents, like their grandparents. And we have no right taking that away from them. We do need to figure out how this needs to happen at Hoyoke High Campus. That is their high school. That is what they want. And we really we really need to take a look and you know, we've got to, we've got to do something about the fact that what was done to these kids. This has been a virtual mind game. The first Instagram post that went out was on March 17. And since that date, there have been numerous, numerous communications that we were moving forward with the graduation to them. And it was loud and it was very in-your-face that we are going to make this happen and now we're pulling out. I can almost wrap my head around the prom. I can almost wrap my head around some of these other events because, you know, some of them would not be 100% safe. This we can do safely. Other districts have done it and we need to do the work and figure it out. I do have questions. Dr. V, how can we? One, I'm under the understanding that an actual plan was not submitted to the Board of Health, which is of concern. But I also would like to know, how do we get a plan together that we can actually move forward with this with the support of the Board of Health?
Absolutely. So thank you for those questions. I think they are valid questions and I echo your sentiments around the community actually expressing their concerns and their desire to have something to celebrate the end of their year as they transition and want to graduate across the stage. And I think it's an important moment in anyone's life to kind of celebrate those achievements of graduating, right? Whether they're going to Korea, the military, or to college and beyond. But I think it's important for me actually to illustrate before we get to the how, but the why, right? And that's always very, very complicated when it comes to kind of these complicated situations around the parameters that we live in around a pandemic, right? And so the question is, why do we make these decisions the way they are? It's not going to look, for me to say to a community, whether it's Hoyoke or any other community, that it's going to be a typical graduation or traditional graduation, it's not fair. So first of all, we need to clarify that it will look different. However, that does not dismiss the fact that we can actually take the moment to celebrate it in a unique way that meets the needs of the current time based on the parameters that we live in. So with that said, I was not, you know, I'm going into what, my third year now into superintendent. So I was not here for the spring or the, or whatever was said around prom or anything like that. Now, I can tell you, if I was your superintendent in May or in April, I would be very clear. And I'm going to be very clear, everyone. I would have not said to anyone or promised anyone prom. I was a high school principal. There's a lot of dancing that happens in prom. There's a lot of socializing that happens in prom. And if I wanted to dress up in a tuxedo or girls wanted to dress up in a nightgown and so forth and wear a mask and understand that there's going to be social distancing and so forth, what, how, what element of or downplaying with that play on a prom? So what is it? What else can we do for our students to celebrate their graduation? So I was not part of that decision-making. However, what I can tell you is this. So I pulled some data as of July 20, as of July 15 around the COVID cases that are happening in Western Massachusetts. So what I know is that in Western Massachusetts right now, as of July 15, Springfield is number one in positive COVID cases. Hoyoke is second. We have 942 positive recent cases as of July 15. So with that said, and understanding the guidance that comes from the state, the CDC, and the local Department of Health, how can actually we develop a plan where people feel safe and secured and at the same time be able to celebrate on occasion like graduation? So I do know there was information that went out on Instagram and so forth. I was, I was not involved in many of these conversations as it relates to kind of what were the details of the requirements that had to be submitted? I did reach out to neighboring districts that actually provided some live or a form of a live graduation and saw their kind of protocols and so forth. And I have instructed the high school administration to do the following. One is to present two options to the school community. And when I mean the school community, one will be a live session at the high school football field in a staggered schedule where the students can actually come together to celebrate, see their teachers, see their faculty, and be at the school in a staggered way where we can limit the crowd based on the guidance that have been provided. Right now, the guidance that has been provided is limiting a crowd in transition to no more than 100 folks. Right? So what student, it might be two invites between, let's say a 30-minute rotation, but at least students actually have a time to celebrate with their teachers, their friends, and actually transitioning. The second option is to look at actually a separate location. Maybe it is the college and how we can actually do that in a way where we can actually celebrate together. And that includes, in both scenarios, option A and option B, live streaming, the fact that there is teacher presence, faculty presence, we are allowed to celebrate, students allow for pictures to happen and so forth, in a very celebratory way, making sure that we are following the protocols of the CDC. The second element to this is actually, once we have the details, the details, complete details, not vague details, but the complete details of option A and option B is to survey the parents. So by tomorrow afternoon, there will be a letter from me going out to the high school families and seniors with the detailed description of option A and option B, what would that look like? And if you wish to participate or not. Because I'm also aware, based on the communication, there were many families that did not feel comfortable coming to any option. So having a live count of who really want to participate actually helps us plan effectively of how we actually can create the safety protocols, how the ceremony is going to be in place, and how actually we can actually deliver a ceremony where students feel valued and celebrated. The other element is that it is clearly articulated in the guidance that has been given to the state that we have to, every district in the state of Massachusetts has to collaborate with the Department of Health in making sure that the safety protocols are secured and actually are protecting the public health of the community. I am not a public health official. My stepdad is a pharmacist. He can, he can deal with that. I am not one of those. So I depend on those public health experts to actually really look at the plan and making sure the plan actually demonstrates the safety and well-being of our community without compromising the celebration of the students. Now, I do have to say, in the last two and a half days, I've been in conversations with school committee members, stakeholders, the mayor's office, his team, Mayor Morse, around how actually we can actually create a plan and an event where we actually can celebrate our students. Understanding the parameters that we have to live with, live by, both by the federal but also the state and local guidance. So we are working with that. Now, the timeline is short. So my message tomorrow to the families is, once you get this survey, I'm going to need a response to see what is your best option? What do you think is the best option? Either option A, we do it at the school in a staggered schedule where students are celebrated, making sure there's social distancing, masks, all of the other protocols? Or is it option B that we go to an alternative location where we can do it? Now, live streaming will be happening. The pictures will be happening. An opportunity for them to me faculty will be happening. But I wanted the opportunity for student and parent voice to be lifted. I am aware there was a meeting today that I asked to happen at 2:30 where parents were involved, teachers were involved, stakeholders were involved in providing feedback on what are the best options that may happen. And that might change between the 24 hours based on the feedback that we received from the stakeholder group meeting today at 2:30 so that we could actually develop a survey where families and students feel that their voice is valued and heard. And so that we can create a plan and a celebration and a graduation where they feel that they had input in the organization and the celebration of this, of this event. And I will stop there.
Thank you again. I have two others. I have Ms. Brunel.
So I would just like to start off by thanking everyone that took their time to put their thoughts and comments forward to us tonight. But the one thing I will say, and I mean, this can be directed directly to you, Dr. V, is how can you tell me that we can't make an outdoor graduation safe because of the COVID numbers? But I'm supposed to send my kid potentially to school for eight hours a day, three weeks after? So I just hope that we decide that, you know, maybe we're not going to school on August 31 because if we can't hold an in-person graduation on August 2 and make it safe, you can't tell me, somebody has to tell me how I can explain to the parents of all the students at my kid's school that are constantly Facebook messaging me, how we're going to make it safe for their kids to go to school on August 31. We can't make an outdoor graduation safe. But three weeks later, send your kid to me for eight hours. I'm sorry, but like, we can't use COVID and safety as a reason to not do something outdoors and then compromise on guidelines to send our children to school three weeks later. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Erin. And I have Mr. Shan.
So I guess just have a couple of things. I mean, I think that this was, I mean, we all know that this was definitely a poor communication moment for all of us. And I mean, no matter where it came from, like, it's on everyone's shoulders. I mean, that's with it. But I guess where a lot more of my concern is, is some of, I mean, graduation is definitely a concern. I have problems. I don't think it should be at HCC. I think we should make something work at Hoyoke High. And that's just important. I've expressed that to the receiver, the importance on that. But more of my concerns are some of the other comments that I've heard. And that's first of all, in regards to the whole scholarship letters and scholarship money situation. I mean, that was just a poor decision and those never should have been held. I mean, I could not imagine having a child that is supposed to start school in a month or so going off to college and still not knowing and not knowing until August 2 what type of scholarship money they were getting. I mean, that, that's a bad decision. And I'm hoping those letters are going out within the next 24 hours. I mean, let's, let's get away from the ceremony, the pomp and circumstance of it. Like, let's get the students what they deserve. I mean, I don't know if there's checks sitting in envelopes. Who knows what's going on? But I mean, high school staff and administrators but I mean, high school staff and administration should be stuffing envelopes right now and getting those out. Also, the yearbook situation, I mean, I don't understand that either. I can maybe guess that the printer said they could have been delayed because of Corona, who knows? I mean, maybe that was it, but like, where are we in yearbooks and the point that students made about fundraising for prom, for other events, like, where is that money? I mean, there has to have been, I know that prom, some of its ticket sales, but I also know that senior classes raise money for other events. So what is that going to? I mean, those are some really important things and it seems like now that there's not gonna be these events, there needs to be some comment on those, but really, that scholarship money, I mean, that's a travesty that that hasn't gone out. And also that diplomas were not available. I mean, it's a conversation that I had with Doctors Wright two months ago that, I mean, diploma should have at least been ready for people to go on June 7th when the original graduation was planned. I mean, that was graduation and that's what was reported. And the fact that these were held, I mean, let's do, let's get something moving. I mean, what is happening with that stuff?
Thank you very much. Can somebody answer that if it's Dr. Ibetto Vasquez Matos or if it's Principal Mahoney?
I don't know if Principal Mahoney is it, but I do, you know, I will be on this already. I mean, it's already on my agenda for today to email around, number one, what are the scholarships and financial aid assistance that are being available to students? And I agree, I mean, that should have been out. And the fact that, you know, graduations are held in usually June, the latest July, you know, things should be in motion already on how we actually get the message out. Yearbooks, I will be totally sincere. I mean, I found out today around the yearbook between a parent that communicated to me and says, "I didn't get a yearbook." So I know pictures happen usually and if I remember when I was a high school principal, that usually happens on a fall to take your picture and then it's actually part of the processing and the publication of the yearbook throughout the year when they put it together. And I saw, by tomorrow, I will send the school committee a report on the status of each of those items so we are aware of where they're at and making sure that students actually get access and families get access to the information as it relates to making informed decisions as they begin their new chapter, starting in September or in August.
Yeah, I guess my concern with the money is that knowing what the process has been in the past is that typically the ones that come from some of the trusts that are held with the city treasurer's office, that the checks need to be cut. I mean, so it's, are these kids gonna be waiting another month and a half? Like, for these, I don't know if, I mean, I don't wanna put people on the spot, but I know Anthony's here, I don't know if he's signed off on any of those disbursements or it just, I mean, that stuff, people are being held up from financial aid packages for colleges that are asking what other outside aid you are getting. I mean, students are being held up, I mean, if they, who knows what scholarship they're getting that would have given them $70,000 that they don't know, I don't know, it seems really bad and there's a lot of unanswered questions with that. And that, the money part needs to be rectified, like ASAP. We know what scholarship students were awarded because they should have been awarded them June 7th and it should have been taken care of then, rather than holding this money hostage for these students.
So I don't know Anthony's involved, but I can connect with him. I mean, there are different elements, either the dollars are actually being issued or, keep in mind that a lot also universities have also closed and there's a lot of delay in processing a lot of the accounts when it comes to universities to allocate dollars. But I will get an answer by tomorrow and I will inform the school committee as it relates to the scholarships or grants that have been awarded to the students.
Yeah, just, you know, a lot of this money is money that we are the custodians for.
Ah, okay.
And that the city is, it's like the class of 1944 gives $44 to the 44th student or the so-and-so scholarship fund that is held within the city. And I mean, that, it's not money that your college or university may be granting to you, it's money that holds, I mean, there's things like the gas and electric scholarship. I don't know if those people know it and those types of things.
Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shan. Ms. Burks, I see that your hand is up again.
So Alex, is there any way that you can help us facilitate this for these families and for these students to try to help work with the Board of Health to come up with a plan that you as the mayor can hopefully support to push this through some way? Like, is there support that we can count on from you to try to guide us through to help get the end result be what it needs to be?
Yeah, and that's what we started to do this morning. And so like many of you, I wasn't aware of any of the decisions being made over the weekend until late last night and early this morning. And so Dr. Vasquez Matos and I spoke this morning. I convened a conversation with the superintendent and the director of the Board of Health and staff in my office to make sure we all would get on the same page because we were hearing different things from different folks. And I wanted to see if there was possibility we could explore, you know, doing it on campus in a safe way, as safe as possible. I, you know, I do wanna, you know, thank, you know, Dr. Matos, obviously, you know, he just became superintendent and promises were made to students and parents, not by him. And I think he and his team are doing the best they can with an unfortunate situation. And, you know, obviously, none of us wanted this pandemic to happen. And in retrospect, we shouldn't have set expectations to the public and to our students that we couldn't keep. And, you know, other communities were able to be very transparent and honest with their students and unfortunately, administrators weren't able to be clear and honest at the time and people hoped that things would be different. I remember the school committee meeting where all of us were connected via Zoom and many of us vocalized and said, "Well, things may not be very different." I mean, nothing fundamentally about coronavirus has changed since this pandemic entered the conversation several months ago. And so I wanna make sure we figure out a way to honor our students' experiences and their graduation in a way that is also in accordance with the Board of Health. I know, you know, Sean, our director, has been clear about gatherings over 250. There's been conversations about this being a gathering of 1,000. And so can we, we understand that students want to be together at one moment, but can we plan something that is longer where it's 250 people at a time? Everybody gets time for pictures, their diploma, to walk. And so I think what we wanna work with in the next 24 hours is a plan that hopefully all of us can get behind. But, you know, I stand ready to convene the Board of Health and do everything we can to make sure we can do this in a safe way. And the last thing I wanna do as mayor is disappoint our graduates and our families. This, again, is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity and I, like others, just lament that we didn't make some of these decisions a few months ago.
So I know, I hope it's okay, Mildred. So I know that, you know, one of the conversations that was had today with the family group and the parents, you know, one question that they asked me to propose tonight was, do we really have to listen to the Board of Health? And I said, "I would do, I would ask it," and I am. And the second idea that was proposed by families today was, what about letting all the students and dignitaries, you know, be on the field and do the regular graduation and families have to watch it, you know, from live stream videos? And we post monitors, you know, in the parking lots or wherever and also live stream it so they could watch that way as well. But let the kids go in and graduate and have that experience as the students with only them being on the football field. So that was another thing that was option that was presented today in that meeting, which, you know, if that's what the students want, I can understand respecting that as well. But it was another option that families brought up today. So I just wanna be mindful. And, you know, I'm really frustrated at the way this information has gone out. I'm angry and I'm frustrated. It's been a really hard issue on everything related to senior stuff. We have not gotten the information we need. Being a senior parent, I know firsthand where parents are coming from, you know, this information is not coming out properly in any way. And I'm angry and frustrated over it, just like most families. And I think that that's something that we do really need to fix that process because that process is broken. You know, we can do all calls for everything else, but the most important stuff, like the financials for these kids for their scholarships, them getting their yearbook, you know, even having the conversations about prom being canceled and in their breakfast and the faculty game, you do all calls for everything else. Why wasn't any of that information put out the same way? Instead, you know, it was kids bringing it to their parents' attention, right? Because a lot of these kids have Instagram and not parents. So it's poor, it's poor communication. And it's something that we've been supposedly working on years to fix, is communication with our families and we failed at this and we failed big. And I just have to call that out because it is highly disappointing as a parent of a senior for all of this happening.
Thank you, Ms. Burks. Erin, your hand is still raised. Did you have another comment or it's just showing raised?
Sorry, I had to, like, passcode my phone. Nope, that was the old.
Okay, all right. Does anybody else have any comments?
I would just, you know, I wanna thank Becky for her thoughts and perspective and I know parents and families are frustrated, rightfully so, and I can't answer to the lack of communication, but I think, you know, folks should be held accountable to that and need to do a much better job communicating that to parents and families. And I imagine folks will be responsive to that. And I did hear earlier today that there had been some conversations or surveys about, and so your suggestion about, you know, whether it's just students, I think what we wanna do as soon as possible is look closer into those options that would be amenable to students and families and see what we can make work. And, you know, I know the state has been clear to the superintendent about having to communicate and work with the Board of Health, but I am obviously gonna do everything I can to make sure we facilitate those conversations and figure a plan out that students and families can get behind. And I think your voice and the voice of other parents and suggestions of things that would be amenable are gonna be important in the next few hours and just over the next day.
You know, Alex, thank you. Thank you for also supporting us for that car parade. That wouldn't have happened without your help for that, so thank you for that, but we need your support on this. We really need your support to help make this happen.
No, of course, and I completely appreciate that. And thank you for your patience and persistence and understanding in a difficult time.
Okay, no other school committee member has any questions because I surely do?
I just have one.
Go ahead, Mr. Shan.
Here again, the order of operations for what's gonna happen, how things are gonna be communicated, just clearly so people know what they should expect within the next, over the next 24-hour period, what they should be looking for, how that's gonna be done and that, those steps.
So yes, so by tomorrow, by the end of day tomorrow, they will receive a letter from me with the clarification and also the options, as well as a link to a survey that I'm going to ask them to actually complete with two various options. One would be an onsite school graduation with a staggered approach based on the enrollment numbers and intend to participate so that we know actually how many families intend to participate because that will actually help us in our planning if families don't want to participate in a live event. The second will be an off-campus, whether it's the college or something else, graduation, the details as it relates to that graduation and the intent to participate for that event. Once that goes out, the deadline to complete that survey will be the end of the week. There's a short amount of period because August is like right around the corner. So I need to kind of then rally the troops to kind of who's gonna help plan this out because I need to then engage the Department of Health, the City Department of Police, the stakeholder group who is working with the high school to making sure they can help with kind of whatever needs to print material and all that. So it's a short turnaround, but the goal is actually by tomorrow, end of day, a letter from me with the details, the clarification and the survey will go out with the survey to be completed no later than Friday of this week.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so nobody else has any questions or comments from the school committee? So I have a few things to say. Number one, I don't think I've been abundantly clear, but I'm gonna be very clear right now. The last thing that school committee members need to be is finding things out on social media. And this is something that has been ongoing where then we're being sent emails in regards to decisions that are being made that we have no idea about. So I'm hoping moving forward that when decisions are made before it is made public on any social media platform, be it Instagram, Twitter, Facebook, that there is at least a bit of respect where the school committee is being informed prior to that. So that way we know how to address anything that comes forth to us. Number two, I wish we were in person because, boy, I would love to see everybody's facial reactions and I only can see a few of them. When we're thinking about how it was for you when you graduated from high school and how you got that chance to walk across that stage, wear your cap, your gown, your family saw you, they were excited, right? It was a great feeling. It's once in a lifetime that it happens, correct? You all enjoyed it? Great. I never had that opportunity, some of you already know that, because I made the choice to drop out of school to raise my kids. But besides that, these kids didn't wanna choose that. They struggled the four years so that they could graduate with everyone else. I keep being thrown that we can't have gatherings of 100, we can't have gatherings of 250. So I'd like somebody to please explain to me where it says that in the reopening or in the reopening phases. Does somebody know that? That can answer that, where those numbers came out?
I can't send you the guidance that was submitted from the state and the CDC.
Okay, because when I'm looking at here at the revised gatherings, it says outdoor gatherings in enclosed spaces. So Roberts Field is not enclosed, it's outdoors. Their spaces are limited to 25% of the facility's maximum permitted occupancy with a maximum of 100 people in a single enclosed outdoor space. This includes community events, civic events, sporting events, concerts, conventions, and more. This order does not apply to outdoor unenclosed gatherings if proper social distancing measures are possible. Just like with everything else, when you're making decisions and you're gonna think of presenting a plan, you need a plan. You can't just say, "We're gonna do this and we hope that everything goes well." Just as you guys are talking every Thursday, you're having your meetings of, "How are we going to reopen the schools?" These conversations should have been happening a long time ago as, "How are we gonna make this graduation happen?" There are other districts that have had this happen and recently was Ashburnham and it's a regional school district. Approximately 180 students graduated from there, but they had a plan. They were able, they were allowed to have up to six guests, okay? And this is all part of the plan. The guests sat somewhere else, the students sat somewhere else. Now, the family sat together, six foot to 10 feet apart from any other family. But we don't, obviously, we didn't have a plan. So how can the Board of Health even say, "Okay, you know, we may agree with them and we're gonna let this happen," when you don't even have a plan to show that there is gonna be social distancing, that we are gonna put measures in place to prevent the spread of COVID? Have we even said that we were gonna do contact tracing by finding out who are the members or the guests that are gonna be coming to celebrate for this student? Did anybody think about that one? Because those are things that you need to show that you're putting into place. So going back to this, being that Mr. Mahoney had the meeting with whomever he had the meeting with, was a plan submitted to the Board of Health or was this just a chit-chat moment?
So I'm not gonna speak to that. I think my goal here is actually how do we actually move forward from what the problem is right now and making sure that we have an opportunity for our students to celebrate? So whether there was a plan, the way it was specifically submitted, there was six feet distancing, there was mask requirements, all the other details that you are lifting, I cannot answer that right now. But I can tell you that, did it suffice to what the Department of Health was looking for? No. And that is fair, that is their job to kind of be the... the public health officials who are going to make sure that there is not a public health crisis in Holyoke. Now, moving forward, absolutely, all those details will be included of what we submit around contact tracing, making sure that we had an attendance log of who's coming in, who's signing up to be a visitor, who's going to participate so that we can provide that information, making sure that we can actually submit an architectural design of where people are going to be located and what is going to be the flow of traffic as students coming to receive their diplomas. All of that will be submitted. But I do want to move the committee forward. Okay, we've learned from this experience. I need to focus on the students and making sure that by that day of August that we have published, these kids get a graduation that they want and that we can celebrate with the situations and the parameters that we have to live by, but that they actually can actually be celebrated. That is my goal right now.
And I understand that's your goal, and I'm happy that you're going to strive to make that happen. But what I need for you to understand from us is that we're also looking at the interests of the students and how every time something's said to them, something else is different. So we always talk about that. We love to hear from students, student voice, student choice, all of this. But it's only when it's convenient for us to listen to them. When it's not convenient, then we shut down and we go our way. So we can't just play two-faced here. So we got to make sure that if we're really going to try to do for them, then we have to put forth the effort to ensure that those that do want it in person, have it in person, those that want it mailed, have it mailed, those that want to do, whichever way it is, obviously, first we need to find out who would be there in person. Because that may minimize the amount of people that are going to be in attendance. So, I mean, that should be the first plan, but I'm hoping because now August 2nd is right around the corner. So I'm hoping everybody's going to put their 110% to make sure that this can actually happen come August 2nd. Like, I'm available if you need help to set up a day before whatever. I don't mind. You know, because for me, it's about the students. It's not about me having, putting on Facebook, "Look what I did." It's not about for me getting recognition. It's about to ensure that these kids actually get what they rightfully deserve. I'm going to go with Ms. Feliciano-Sims.
Thank you, Mildred. Again, just want to thank the families reaching out and everything. I'm just curious about the timeline. You said the timeline for the survey results will be at the end of this week. And then you guys are going to be working hopefully over the weekend to tally this up, right? And then you submit the proposal to the Board of Health, and what does their timeline look like? And if, I'm just curious, if the Board of Health or you guys don't get that information and you literally have four days to get all that information in, if that gets pushed back, what is that timeline going to look like? Because I'm just, I have families asking, like, again, you're going to put the proposal into the Board of Health. What is their turnaround?
That's a great question. So I have spoken to the Director of the Department of Health. I've spoken to Mayor Morrissey's Chief of Staff today. And they're committed to turn this around quickly. And so it's about what can we do best for our students to celebrate this event? So I have to say, they have been all, they have stepped up to the plate to make it work. What they're looking for is actually, "All right, tell me what's the plan." Right? So that's the goal right now, is actually articulating the plan based on the stakeholder input so that we can actually say, "Okay, if the majority of the families want to have it at the high school, that's where we're going to go. This is what we need to do. What are the requirements?" And then go step by step by the protocols of making sure that we have the attendance, what's the flow of traffic, what happens if, you know, if there's a crowd, you know, delay and things of that sort. And then what is, what are the timelines of the staggered approach to making sure that students actually get the opportunity to walk across the stage, take the picture, and celebrate them and move forward from that? So that is all going to happen very quick. Do I have a template already? Yes. The goal is now actually to actually now populate the template.
Thank you. Ms. Burks, did you have another? Your hand is there.
So, yeah, on the topic of graduation, but not on the topic of the physical actual graduation. I was notified last night of some very disturbing information that is going to have some really serious effects on our children. So I was made aware that some students are going to be given a diploma when they should be given a certificate of achievement. This is illegal, it's immoral, and it's totally irresponsible to the students of this district. Students that are on IEPs that have not passed ALPS, have not shown that they have the competencies, are going to be giving a diploma is embarrassing. And it's illegal. You cannot do that without it being written into an IEP and having clear conversations with families that as of, with the day they received their diploma, they were no longer eligible for services. And parents have to agree about it. And we're finding out last minute, you know, kind of under the radar, that these are things that are happening within our district and that kids that really have not met the competencies that are needed to graduate are going to be given a diploma, basically using these new COVID clauses. And I'm concerned, and this is something that needs to be brought to parents' attention. They need to be aware, and they need to start asking the questions now. Because again, if you have a student that at 18 gets his diploma or her diploma, they will lose some services if they are special needs. And there are services that are going to affect them for the rest of their lives. So, you know, there's some really interesting things that are happening in the district that are very, very concerning. But this case specifically is illegal, it's immoral, and it's irresponsible, and it's downright disgusting. So, you know, I want to make people aware. I found out about this last night. And people need to be aware that this is happening, and parents need to be able to advocate for their child, but they need to be aware to be able to advocate. So I think it's important that this information gets out there.
Thank you, Ms. Burks. So, that's concerning. I don't know if Ms. Courier or you, Dr. Vasquez-Matos, can speak on that. How do we correct something like this? Because if there's one thing that families are going to be hurting by, is if if they're not aware of this right now, and come the day of graduation, you guys do it in person, that student goes and grabs that diploma and walks back to their seat. That's accepting that diploma. As of right there, Holyoke Public Schools does not have to provide them services at all. Now, these could be students that their level of education is still at second grade level, okay? With severe mental disabilities, physical limitations. So if families aren't aware of that, and there are some that are being raised by their own grandparents, once they get that, they have nothing. How are we going to correct this issue before day of graduation?
So, again, I have been, I was made aware of this over the weekend as well. And so immediately, you know, I began kind of an action plan of how to address it. So in speaking to our Chief of Student Support Services, you know, there was guidance that was sent to all of the directors as it relates to kind of the alternative certification versus diploma and so forth, and kind of the guidance as it relates to that. Now, I would allow Chief Courier to kind of speak the legality around it. But I need to kind of be careful on making sure, because I did open an active investigation that's being done currently as a result from the complaint. So I cannot speak more than that, because I do take that seriously. And Chief Courier is helping me in the investigations, so I'm going to leave it there. But if you have any kind of legal questions that need to be addressed as it relates to difference between a certificate completion versus a diploma, Chief Courier is here to speak to that as it relates to her expertise. But I need to stop it there because I did open an active investigation.
Okay, so then just a question to Ms. Courier. Is it fair to say that if a student takes that diploma, that services, HPS is not required to provide them any services, meaning transitional services?
So the issue is actually more for after they leave Holyoke Public Schools. So we would have the mechanism in place to be able to support our students until they turn 22. It becomes a little bit tricky, but we certainly would work with families. The issue that was brought up is around services beyond the Holyoke Public Schools. It's that if a student has actually earned their high school diploma, they would not be eligible for adult services when they leave the Holyoke Public Schools. So we have to take a look at, you know, has a student earned their diploma? When do they actually receive the diploma? And, you know, what IEP services does a student need for transition services? That's why the IEP team is so important. It's the IEP team that needs to make those decisions. So there's two issues. It's the issue of what services are needed for, what services does that student need? How long do they need those services within the public schools? But specifically around this issue that we're talking about right now is the actual receiving of a diploma and earning that diploma and what the services are after they leave the Holyoke Public Schools when they turn 22. And we're definitely, like Dr. Vasquez-Matos said, that, you know, we're looking into that. I'm reviewing all of the students that were submitted for review, and it is an active investigation.
So you're saying that we would do it out of the kindness of our hearts to continue to educate them? Because I thought that according to the law, once a student in special education takes that diploma, the high school diploma, that is considered that they have graduated. It's not like we go ahead and start keeping the other students, general ed students.
So, again, let me just clarify. So what I'm saying is that, so we have a number of students that receive their competency determination, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we would move further and issue their diploma right now. We, what we need to do, looking at the individual needs of students, is determine have they met all of the graduation requirements? We have a number of students that maybe they met the requirements, they passed MCAS, but as a special education team, we're saying that they still continue to need services. So they would still continue to receive their IEP services even though they may have passed the MCAS. They wouldn't have accepted their diploma at this point. It would be, they would get their diploma when they turn 22. It's two different issues. It's receiving an actual diploma. So we have a number of students that do receive their diploma when they turn maybe 20 or 21 after we've given them, that provided them the services that they require based on their IEP. So we have students that continue to receive services and receive their diploma before they leave the Holyoke Public Schools. We also have students that, you know, finish with us at age 22, receive a certificate of completion, and go on to receive services through the adult service agencies. So we need to make sure we're doing our due diligence to ensure that students are receiving, students are receiving a diploma that have earned a diploma and making it clear students that should be receiving a certificate of completion are receiving that certificate of completion. What's challenging is that, like, right now, because of COVID, because students weren't able to take that last chance at MCAS, we have a number of students that potentially could have received a diploma if they had taken that MCAS and passed that MCAS. So the school, the district, was charged with really taking a look at who are the students? What is their path that they're on? And would they, you know, can we endorse that they should be meeting those eligibility requirements to be able to receive a diploma? So what, right now, my team is investigating and working with Dr. Vasquez-Matos on is what was the process that was followed? And reviewing each and every one of those cases to ensure that the right process was followed.
Okay, that's kind of what I was wondering, if that's what we're doing. So it's kind of like a diploma in the drawer, sort of say.
Right, that they passed the MCAS. However, just passing the MCAS doesn't mean you get a diploma today. That passing the MCAS is one piece of it. So we have students that have passed the MCAS or are receiving their competency determination. However, they have not, and they have not met all of the other requirements because they continue to need services to support them beyond grade 12. So they continue to reservices through us, typically through our transitions program. And then, once they've met all of those service requirements, then they would complete with the Holyoke Public Schools and either receive a diploma at that time or receive a certificate of completion, depending on what their path was.
Okay. You don't need a letter from the families, do you, stating that they're not wishing to accept it? Like, you guys are going to work with them to go through that?
Yes, we will be working with all of the families individually, yes.
Okay, great. Mr. Shan?
Yeah, so I just have a more of a process question. Trying to read and do some research on this earlier today. So my understanding is that high school-age students that may be going on and getting services past the age of 22 that are within special ed would have had some sort of transitional meeting probably around like age 14, 13, 14, 15, 16, around there. And, I mean, parents have somewhat regular team meetings with, for the IEP and agree to things. So I'm assuming, and I'm guessing that parents are told around that time of that transition of what pathway a student is possibly on, whether they would be on a pathway for a high school diploma or on a pathway for a certificate of achievement, and then maybe entering a program like transitions or whatever it may be that's in the best interest of that student. So is it typical that things would be unilaterally changed from what would be in the IEP and the transition meeting without another meeting?
No, that is not typical. So those are the questions that we're asking right now. Again, you know, this is, this was a different protocol, given the circumstances and students not being able to take the MCAS this spring. But those are the things that we're investigating right now. And just so that the community is aware, we actually start notifying parents as students are entering the fourth grade. So as soon as a special education team determines that a student would be taking the alternate assessment for the MCAS, we have a procedure in place. We have letters that go out to families every year that explain that your child is taking an alternate assessment. This may mean that they would not be eligible to receive a diploma. So we really work hard to ensure that families understand what it means to be taking the alternate assessment, because we don't want any surprises. We want it to be really clear to students and families what this means. We want to afford our students every opportunity to be able to take and pass the MCAS, to earn that diploma. But we recognize that that's not always the path for all of our students. So we really need to be thoughtful about that. And that's something that's in their IEPs from a very early start on what their path is, what the expectations are, and really what we see for them is what they need for services to continue, you know, with us through, you know, up until they turn 22, if that's needed. And then really working hard with our partner agencies on making it a smooth transition into their adult services. So it should all be done through the team meeting process. You're right, Devin.
Yeah, and I mean, that is what's paramount to our federal special ed requirements. And I know that a thorough investigation is going to see where this all fell apart. Because it will only work to harm the people that are impacted for the long-term goals in their life with some of these things. Now, as far as either regular ed or special education students at the high school level, has every student been marked already in the student information system that they have completed their high school career and have been marked as graduates within their official transcript?
I don't know the answer to that. Dr. Vasquez-Matos?
I don't, I don't think so, because they have to kind of get to the commencement part. And then a lot of some of them are actually finishing some credits as we speak over the summer period.
Okay, so right now, a high school transcript for any student would not say that they've graduated, for any student?
That is my understanding. I can follow up. I think Dr. Mahoney is on the call. But I think that once they, there's some students actually in the summer program that will, if they complete their credits, will qualify for graduation. And then they will, we call the upload. And then they will, we call the upload or the rollover of the transcripts.
Okay, because I know typically that'd be done at like the summer graduation we hosted in August for those in the past. I guess I'm just wondering that if a student would have graduated on June 7th, they are not marked as a high school graduate?
Yeah, Val, are you Val, can you answer that question? I know you're online.
Hi, I'm on. Can you repeat that?
Yeah, Val, my question is, is for students who would have walked on June 7th and would have completed all of the necessary requirements to be awarded a diploma by the Holyoke Public Schools. In the student information system, is it effectively marked for them that they are? If someone calls up and says, may I please have a copy of my high school transcript? Is it marked for them that they are high school graduates?
The in School Brains, we do update that. I would have to confirm with Gail to make sure the date of that. But once everything's processed and she's given the green light by the high school, she does keep on top of School Brains being very accurate with the graduation dates.
So quite possibly, the students in question that should not have received a diploma are marked in our student information system as graduates?
It's not completely finalized right now because it's she doesn't do any finalization until we submit our data to the state, which is not due for a little while. So while it is in there, it is able to be changed.
Okay.
If I should say if it's updated now, which I can check with Gail tomorrow and make sure where we are with that or unless Mahoney's been in contact with her or Dr. Mahoney and he could give an update on that. But it's nothing that we can't change because we haven't submitted our data to the state yet.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ms. Burks, I see your hand up, but then after that, so we can start moving forward because we do still have a lot left on the agenda. And I know that the reopening plan is going to be a whole lot longer.
I gotcha. So basically, one of the things that I do want to say is that Mary Ann and Dr. V were both awesome when I brought this forward as a concern. Both responded right away and have been looking into this. You know, to Devin's point, I think we absolutely need that information as quickly as possible as to whether or not these kids are marked as graduated. Kind of going with Devin's mindset because clearly diplomas had to have been ordered. So in, you know, so we do need to look at that immediately because if that is the case and diplomas have been ordered, you know, that's an issue. But, you know, thank you for looking into this. Thank you for doing an investigation and following through. And I'll be looking for more information moving forward as to, you know, how we're going to fix this.
Thank you, Ms. Burks. And I just want to remind everyone, I am looking at the chats. I know we're not supposed to be posting in there because of it'll become part of the minutes. So I don't know, that's all I have to say. Moving forward, we're going to go to communications and reports from Dr. Vasquez Matos. This is all, this is your floor now.
Thank you. So I did submit a written report on several topics. I will kind of give the highlights. And then I will take a deep dive into reopening, which I think is the most relevant and most pressing conversation we're having now. But in the report that is available to the public and to the school committee as relates to the summer school programming, our goal was always to provide a high quality programming options to meet the needs of our students and families, putting safety and program quality first in order to, one, provide engaging learning opportunities to support student learning and prevent learning regression and provide high school students with multiple opportunities to earn credits needed for graduation. The summer school planning process included the creation of a planning committee that included memberships from the summer school program leads, the chief instructional officer, chief of pupil services, facility departments leads, director of health, wellness and nursing, and the planning team collaborated with the board of health to approve all safety plans. And facilities team performed walkthroughs and all in person. This week is my understanding that this week the transition students actually kicked off their year, their week as part of the summer school programming. So we're excited for that to have happened. There's a lot of celebrations around it. The attendance and engagement percentages are high. High school engagement as it relates to summer school program was at almost 90%, which is great, as well as our middle school and high school, which are closely to around 80% as well. There is a detailed PowerPoint as an add as an addendum to the packet for more information for this committee as well as the public to actually review. An update on the teacher hiring for the upcoming year. To date, we have 108 known vacancies this recruitment season. Last year, at this time, we had approximately 122.
Dr. Vasquez Matos, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I have a comment here from the interpreter. He's hoping if we could speak a little bit slower so that he could get the whole interpretation in.
Got it.
Sorry about that.
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Eventually, we'll have this all translated. To date, there have been 108 known vacancies this recruitment season. Last year, at this time, we had approximately 122 known vacancies. To date, we have 96 positions filled, three pending officers and nine unfilled positions. Seven of our schools are fully staffed. Additionally, we have five candidates who are ready to be placed and have accepted conditional offers of employment. Approximately 45% of our new hires identify as people of color. And we project that we will have a total of 26.5% of teachers who identify as people of color. This will be 4.6 increase from where we stand in school year 1920 and a 13.4% increase over the last five years. We also anticipate starting the school year with 23 more for a total of 96 Latino or Latinx teachers this year compared to the start of the 1920 year. Our applicant pool has exceeded our targets and we currently have 708 unique applicants. Please keep in mind that that also would be lifted as our strategy for strategic operating plans around teacher and recruitment moving forward. A status on the Metcalf Blessed Sacrament expansion. The Metcalf and Blessed Sacrament project is on schedule. Lease negotiations are finalized and being forwarded to the chief procurement officer for contract signatures. Delay was due to deep discounting changes for the first year and or and other alterations per our request. The asbestos plan has been undertaken, has been compiled. The city building department has agreed with our improvement scopes. And architectural details are being finalized now for permitting. The ADA compliance access ramp design is complete. Shop drawings for approval are expected this week. Production will begin immediately afterward. The American Disability Act first floor bath layout is finished with all internal mechanical hookups identified and furniture for classroom has been ordered. Technology accommodations have been specified for the main entrance, call, box, stereo, video locations. All have been identified. Interior wireless access points, locations and network switches and data terminals have been determined. We anticipate to open this new wing for the Metcalf School for the opening of the school year. So we have a couple of retirements to celebrate. I don't know, Madam Vice Chair, if you want to read out the names? If you want me to read out the names, I can kind of give the the summary and you can read out the names and the years of service if you would like.
Still on mute, sorry. So I read out the names and you say something about them?
Well, I'll I'll give the intro and you read out the names.
Okay, sounds great.
So we want to thank all of these teachers and employees for Holyoke for the dedication of years of service to the children and families of Holyoke Public Schools. So when I tallied all of the years of service altogether, there's a total of 560 years of service all of these retirees have given to our families and students to Holyoke. So this is, this is a proud celebration. We will be mailing them a token of our appreciation. Usually, we, my understanding, they come to the board meetings. We give them a token due to the kind of circumstances. But we will be mailing them a gift and a token of our appreciation for the years of service. So with that said, Madam Vice Chair, if you would like to read out the names and the years of service.
So just to be clear, as of right now, if I mess up the name, I'm going to try my hardest not to. So the first one is Dory Gallin, math teacher. She has served nine years. Nellie Alvarez, paraprofessional, 10 years of service. Patricia Veloy, special education teacher, 10 years of service. Marilyn Colby, RN nurse practitioner, 14 years of service. Juan Cruz, junior custodian, 14 years of service. Nancy Milch, occupational therapist, 18 years of service. Christine, I hope I'm saying it right, Gamachi, paraprofessional, 21 years of service. Evelyn Santiago, paraprofessional, 21 years of service. Norine Uwicke, principal, 21 years of service. Barbara Taban, physical education teacher, 23 years of service. Abraham Mendez, junior custodian, 23 years of service. Denise Dakota, art teacher, 24 years of service. Robert Fry, social studies teacher, 24 years of service. Jose Aponte, junior custodian, 24 years of service. Thomas LaFond, craftsman, 29 years of service. Maria Cruz, cafe helper, 30 years of service. Mary DeCarlo, elementary teacher, 33 years of service. Mary Ellen Schuchuck, ELL teacher, 33 years of service. Barbara Laramie, a cook, 34 years of service. Lisa O'Neil, special education teacher, 34 years of service. Edward Orlovsky, senior custodian, 35 years of service. Patricia Kennedy, ELL teacher, 35 years of service. And James Borland, junior custodian, 41 years of service. Oh, that's awesome. Congratulations to them. I hope they enjoy retirement. I wish I was retiring. But thank you. Thank you for all your service to the Holyoke Public Schools, to our families, our children, our community. You're still on, Dr. Vasquez Matos?
Yep, I do want to give an update kind of where we at with the reopening and all our plans. So I will, I'm not sure if Mike or Erin is going to do a screenshot or am I going to do that?
I could share it for you.
Okay.
Mike, do you have it? Do you want me to do it?
Thank you.
So I do want to give the the school committee and and the public kind of an update of where we at as it relates to kind of what we have been doing over the summer and also kind of our reopening plan. Next slide, please. So the agenda will cover, the presentation will cover kind of four aspects of this. The reopening planning, the family survey that was conducted and a kind of overview of the results of the family survey, as well as also talking about meeting the basic needs during closure, as well as additional information that is provided that supported, that is supports the work and will continue to support the work as we kind of define what reopening will look like for Holyoke Public Schools. So I want to begin by talking around the reopening plan. And so there was a directive, or if you may, a charge from the from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education basically requiring all public school district in the Commonwealth in the state of Massachusetts that we need to submit a preliminary plan that addresses three learning models. One is actually an emphasis on an in-person learning model, which means basically that all students will come back to school through a brick and mortar building and to engage in kind of a learning opportunity. The second is actually what we call is actually the hybrid remote model. And that might look different by by district to district. But basically, what it talks about is actually creating alternate schedules for students, whether they come in two days a week because they're group A, a week off, the schools are closed, or two weeks and then two other days where group B will come and the other group will be remote. Or it might be in other districts that they alternate weeks. Week A, half of the school comes in and then the following week, another week, another half of the school comes in because of logistical challenges, because of scheduling challenges, because of transportation. All of this is part of kind of what we were asked to kind of do as a feasibility study to see what options work best for the district. And then lastly, is kind of the remote. Basically, what our students have been doing since since March and actually that the entire district will actually be going remote as part of the learning module. We are to submit our initial draft and recommendation by July 31st. And by August 10th, after we get feedback from various stakeholders, we will submit a comprehensive plan with more detailed information to the department for approval and then we will share with the public. Yes, it is important to understand that, yes, the school committee, we do have a school committee member who actually will be part of this presentation, who has been part of kind of the reopening plan and bringing kind of the input and kind of the updates as it relates to what is best for Holyoke.
Dr. Alberto Vasquez, I think I have a question from Mr. Jay Wallahan.
Okay, do we want to take questions now? Do you want to take questions towards the end or midpoint?
So Jay, I'm sorry, I don't know if your question was beforehand or is it going to be relative to this?
It was before. I just wanted to thank the retirees.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry about that, Jay. I just noticed it and Devin had called me up on that one. Okay, thank you. So we'll take questions at the end for the reopening plan.
So as it was stated, I was appointed by Ms. LaFave as the member of the school committee within the reopening committee. And just and it's really a back to school committee because we have been open and learning just that our buildings may have been locked but all along. But some key actions to date was that there was the remote learning survey that went out that I believe that it was the engagement survey that we had seen. There was an assessment done by the various different cabinet level departments and then the people who report up to them of the things that worked and areas that we need to improve upon regarding these shutdowns. There's been the weekly communication of staff and community. You've probably seen the report that goes out. I mean, I think we're on report number 10 that goes out once a week regarding this. Various subcommittee meetings that are dealing with some of the granular pieces of this that are led by chiefs and other directors. Educational outreach, the input on summer school. As we mentioned, you have the presentation on summer school within the packet. Family and staff surveys for return to school. Those went out last week, I believe, and two weeks ago. And there's been some good data coming back on those. Facilities walkthroughs have been occurring and the return to school plan initiation. So which was mentioned is due back in July 31st to ESC. And I think that it's been, I will say that they've been really great meetings that we've had and I am fortunate to serve on that and the people that are committed to that. It's a cross section of his parent representatives, just so people know. It's a cross-section of his parent representatives, just so people know, administrators, teachers. It's a good group of people to really examine this.
So the next part of this presentation is talk, I want to talk a little bit about the family survey. So as you probably heard in kind of the initial conversation today, I'm all about getting stakeholder input and making sure we find vehicles where stakeholders can provide input in a meaningful way to kind of drive decision-making for the district. So with that said, one of the things that I did ask the team to conduct actually a survey questions as it relates kind of the three models of instruction. How do they feel? What are the resources that they need and so forth? So with that said, I'm going to ask our chief of strategy and turnaround officer Erin Linville, who is leading the reopening leadership team and has been part of the district for five years and kind of has helped guide the work of making sure that we are meeting our deadlines and kind of on task.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for having me today and nice to see you on Zoom. First of all, it's so amazing we had 50% of our families respond to the survey within a week, and which is a real testament to the obvious, the importance of this issue and making sure that we really fulfill out, fulfill our vision of a pathway for every student by planning for multiple scenarios. So on the next slide, we see interpreting the survey results. Families might have responded, if they have more than one child, they might have taken the survey twice or just once, reflective of both children. So the breakdowns aren't mutually exclusive. This survey shows the graphs where there was most of a difference than the subgroup categories. If we didn't show a subgroup category, there tended not to be a big difference across grade levels or English versus Spanish speaking for the survey responses. But there are more graphs in the appendix too. If you have questions, then we'll post this online shortly too. Next slide. The biggest question obviously is will you send your child in person to school in the fall? Obviously, we recognize that families want more information before making the ultimate decision, but this information is really helpful when paired with our facilities planning. We started walkthroughs this week, so we have, we can estimate how many children we can safely fit in each classroom. With this one, you'll see, just to orient us, on the bottom in the light blue is 33% of families indicated they would, indicated a preference for in-person learning as much as the district could accept their child. 28% that darker blue is saying the families that said they're going to opt out of in-person learning and instead do remote learning. And then 35% in the gray is unsure, they need more information. And then the 5% is others, so those were write-in answers. So it could have been a combination of those or most likely are other. We do see a difference between English and Spanish speaking, where families who responded to the survey in Spanish are less likely to prefer the in-person, the in-person learning at this time. Next slide. Here we see the breakdown by grade band, and we see that high school students are a little bit more likely to come back to school in person than pre-K to eight. And the pre-K students are a little bit less likely, though I would note that the pre-K students have the highest percentage of parents who are unsure yet what their decision is going to be. I'm going to go fast just and take more questions at the end. On the next slide, we break down this question looking at students who are English learners or students who have an individual education plan or 504 plan. And in this slide, we see a lower percentage of students who are Ls or who have IEPs coming back for in-person learning. We see that their families at this point prefer, preferring remote learning at a higher rate. Next slide, please. Then we broke it down on school, and we do see variances. This slide shows will you send your child in person if you're at an elementary or pre-K school? And there is, there is variance. A couple of things that stuck out to me on this slide was Kelly percent, Kelly with only 20% preferring in-person. We do know that this is reflective of about a quarter of the families responded. At McMan, we have about average for percent in-person, but a really high percentage, 51% unsure. So those were two variances I noticed. On the next slide, we see the middle schools, high schools, and specialty programs. Something that stuck out to me here were the high percent of people wanting virtual learning, both at PEC and Veritas, almost 50% at those schools. On the next slide, we asked families, if you do not plan to send your child to school in person, please share the primary reason why. The leading indicator, as you can see in that dark gray chart, is the general fear of COVID exposure for my child. We do have 17% each saying that the child has an underlying medical issue or another 17% saying that a family member in the household has an underlying medical issue. That there were just a few who responded, other or just a few who had transportation concerned as their primary reason. So obviously, it's the general fear of COVID mostly contributing towards people preferring, those who preference the remote learning. On the next slide, we then start to look at busing. And this slide asks us, if your child is opting out of in-person learning, oh wait, sorry, backing up, sorry. This is about if, okay, sorry. We can go to the next slide. So this is about remote learning. If your child is opting out of in-person learning, will your child fully participate in HPS remote learning or virtual learning? Here we see that 74% of respondents will commit to all the remote learning, an additional 20% will commit to some remote learning, and about 6% indicated they would not commit to remote learning. We don't see huge variances by EL or IEP status at this point. A little bit for IEP being a little bit less likely. Okay, now we can go on to the next slide. Now we're to busing and transportation. We're asking families, are you comfortable sending your child on a bus? And we see in purple that 52% are not comfortable sending their child on a bus. We see that families who have a child on an IEP or 504 are slightly more comfortable than families in the comparison group. This could be potentially due to a difference in the types of buses that they may have access to, but we don't know. So we're seeing that more than half of families are not comfortable sending their kid on the bus. On the next slide, we asked families, will you, would you be able to find an alternative means of transportation? Biking, walking, dropping them off in your own car? And we see that 58% of families could find an alternative form of transportation. And we'll say this is promising to us. The bus capacity numbers right now look at, look like we'd only be able to have about a third of the numbers of students on the bus. So it would be a benefit to students and the district if we didn't need to provide as much busing. Going on to the next slide, we start to move into what are the supports that your family will need for the school year? And this is one where you could collect, you could select all that applied. So 70% of the respondents indicated that they would need learning materials, 48% devices, 44% would like help with face coverings and masks. And you can read through on down. It says food, internet access, training on technology, mental health services, and translation or interpretation. On the next slide, we asked about devices in a different way. So if we did move to a hybrid model or remote, remote learning model, would your child or children need access to an HPS-issued device? And here we see that number bump up to 59%. They indicate that they would need access to a device. I really want to commend Anthony Soto and the technology team because they have already worked to secure and procure enough devices for grades K through 12 such that if we do go remote or do hybrid, every student, every child would have access to a device. That means if you are a mom of two or dad of two, both of your children would have access to a device, so we wouldn't have to worry about sharing devices. On the next slide, we start to go into, I just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. Yep. What do you believe are the most important focus areas for the fall? This was one where families needed to select up to three areas, so we did do some forced choice here. And you'll see that about 75% indicated that both math and linguist art should be at the top of the list for areas of focus, followed by mental health, science and social studies, and social connection with peers, all around 50%. 39% of respondents indicated physical health and wellness in their top three, and 25% indicated arts and music in their top three. This isn't to say that we're not, this isn't to suggest that we're not going to try to provide everything, but this does help us to understand if we have limited time in schools, what do we need to prioritize the most? Or if we have limited bandwidth kind of for what students can handle through remote learning, what should be prioritized the most? Next slide, please. Next, we asked, if we needed to move to hybrid or remote at some point, what recommendations would you have for your child's school? Obviously, the families had a, had a chance to experience this for three months this year. And at the top of this list are more one-to-one or small group connections between their child and their teacher. And then also more synchronous, which means live learning led by my child's teacher. We saw a lot of other answer choices on here. More feedback on their work at 44%. More opportunities to connect with classmates, that's 42%. More physical resources, et cetera. We had more choices on here that didn't all come up just so that, just so people know what less popular choices were, so meaning they didn't seem to be as big of a need. Were access to a device, more student-guided learning from IAC, like from third-party resources like an iXL or Lexia, information on community resources and access to the internet, were all, all less likely to be needed. Once again, I really want to thank the families for responding to the survey. We looked at this information just at a basic level at reopening leadership team last week at Cabinet, and every committee is using it to inform their plans for the school year. Like I said, the principals have the data at their fingertips as we go on the facilities walkthroughs. And every single school also got their school-specific information. And then we asked a number of open response questions too, so that both the district and school leaders can start to read through it to understand those things that don't fit in the perfect survey question. So at this point, I'd be, I'll turn it over to Dr. Vasquez Matos to finish talking about meeting basic needs during closure, and I'll obviously stay on to answer any questions. I also run, sorry, I would be remiss not to thank Jose Bo and Mario Flores, who led the design of the survey as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Erin. So, and the slide disappeared.
Dr. V, I have this slide printed out if you want me just to quickly speak to it.
No, I haven't. I just need the visual. I mean, oh, here we go. It is slide 23. So one of the things that I decided as I came on board is kind of really analyze what has been done and what needs to happen moving forward. And one of the things that I wanted to deep dive is actually really address the digital divide. One, access to internet. Two, access to a device. And three, the other aspect around basic social needs, meals and so forth. So I wanted to ask, I wanted to see kind of where we are as the meals that have been served district-wide. So when schools have, when schools closed in March, we were able to actually serve 21,000 meals in one month. And that means three meals a day, which includes the weekends as well. As we got to April and schools decided with closure, that number has actually increased to 64,800 meals that we have served in the city of Holyoke. And then when we got to May, as you can see the increase, we got to close to 100,000 meals that we served in the city of Holyoke. June, 93,000. And July, which is as of July 10th, we have served 29,000 meals to the city of Holyoke. So that is telling. So that's what basically approximately 306,000 meals we have served in the city of Holyoke to our youth. And that is telling when you're talking around, when you, when we're talking around making sure students have access and how do we actually meet the needs? So when we look at devices, the question I asked, and I know Erin applauded Anthony around securing dollars, but however, when I came on board, the question I asked was, well, how do we secure devices? Do we secure them by families or do we secure them by families? And the response is we needed to secure them by families, which to me was a concern around addressing the digital divide and the question around equity. Because we all know that when we're dealing with households that have multiple siblings, a laptop that's issued by a district can be used for many purposes, such as my sister goes to a charter school or neighboring district, and I need to borrow her laptop, she didn't get one, so I need to use it. They got to share it within the time span that has been instructed. Mom or dad might use the laptop because they need to connect with grandma or grandpa who is probably sick in another city because amid the pandemic. So all of these issues surface when we're sharing one device in a household. So with that said, how do we actually repurchase our dollars in making sure that all students actually have access to a device when we start the new school year? The second rationale behind that is that what we've learned in the past when it comes to the pandemic is that when we had to stop schools in March, there had to be a pause, a pause to teach teachers around blended learning and what, how, how do we, how do we teach in a virtual society? We had to pause in making sure that we actually delivered devices to our students and making sure that we create systems and protocols in place so them to pick them up or we had to deliver them. And also, lastly, is how do we actually teach our students and families how to navigate the internet to be able to do virtual learning? So with that said, one of the things that we are working on currently is, one, in August, we will have enough devices that we can actually say that Holyoke Public Schools is a one-to-one school district when it comes to devices. The second thing is we, I am working with Val, our chief instructional officer, and her team around making sure that all staff, not just teachers, principals, paraprofessionals, all get training as it relates to understanding how it is to actually work in a blended learning environment. And how do we push in the supports that are needed, whether they are in the traditional education setting or whether they are in the special ed setting? How is it that all staff are able to actually push in the supports needed so that instruction does not stop in the event that there is a second wave of the pandemic? In the event that we have to actually close a school because there's a COVID case that is spreading? Instruction does not. instruction does not stop. The other element to this is actually working with Mario, our chief of engagement, and his team. Okay, we get all the academics, we get all of the student supports correct. What about outreach? How is it that we are actually using our staff and our partnerships to making sure that every student is connected to a caring adult so that they feel engaged? And so our students who feel disengaged and disconnected actually really start seeing that there is a caring adult who is asking them, are you okay? How can I help? Beyond asking if I can, did you do your homework? Did you check into, in your Google Classroom? But asking the questions, do you need something? What is it that you need? You need some outreach? Do you need some services? Beyond what is the academic, so that students feel support and connected to a caring adult. So this is all part of the work that we're doing right now as it relates to the plan to making sure that it's not just focused on the academics, but it's actually grounded and centered in the whole child. So with that, I will stop there and allow for questions. The rest of the presentation, our appendix for additional information as it relates to kind of the data we collected and information as it relates to the planning of the reopening of schools.
Okay, Mr. Shan.
Yeah, I just wanted to correct one thing that I said. If whoever is controlling the presentation, if they can just go to slide twenty-eight for a second. I had mentioned the opening leadership team, and I just want people to know who was there. I had mentioned there's administrators and teachers and parents on it, but we also had a representative from, we had June Lavelle from the par union president and also a parent on there. So just so people can see the folks that have been putting in the hard work, doing this and doing this work and getting it going, as well as, and there's subcommittees with a lot of other people on it too, making this successful.
Thank you. I'm just looking here for a minute. Does anybody have any questions in regards to the presentation on the reopening plan? I don't see any members of the school committee, but... Oh, you do have Jay. Okay, Mr. Wallahan.
Real quick, thank you. Regarding the masks, will be like masks available at the schools and nurse's office for the students that they need them?
Yes, we're asking that, so we're providing two masks to all staff members. We're asking that families purchase face coverings or masks like they would back-to-school supplies, but any family who cannot should work with their school to get them. Our director of services for students to experience homelessness will have extra masks as well. And then say if just this child forgets the mask, we're gonna have the reusable ones available at the school site too. We don't want to turn away any student who's ready to learn because they forgot their mask. But we're really, we can run through these masks pretty quickly, so we really want it to be known that it's really important that that be considered like an important responsibility to try to remember to bring your mask to school every single day.
Thank you.
And I also spoke to two partners that are actually going to be donating cloth masks to the district to be available for our students, which will be part of kind of the backpack back-to-school effort to make sure they have them in their backpacks as they come back to school. The other aspect is also, part of the learning modules is also making sure there's modules for parents and families to learn around this new way of learning. And what's the expectation of parents, such as checking your student temperatures, making sure, you know, getting students ready before they get on the bus or coming to school. If they feel sick, they're okay. Attendance is going to kind of be waived and lifted and things of that sort. We just got guidance over the weekend around various scenarios. And so the team is reviewing it, and the goal is actually to kind of push it out to the community in a very family-friendly way for them to understand and kind of actually be able to adhere to it.
Okay, Mr. Shan. Was there anything else, Mr. Wallahan?
No, I'll say, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Shan.
Yeah, two questions. I don't know if Mr. Soto's available or someone else would know this, but I'm just curious. I know that in April or May, we came up with the agreement with Comcast regarding the internet in the home through Internet Essentials. And I want to say if they signed up in April or May, was it like November, October, November, that that would be expiring? So what, if anything, we're doing about that? And also, I know that we did a really good job getting computers out to students. And I mean, we were getting them out to families, and I know people were working to get those out there as much as possible. But one thing too is making sure that all the staff has it. I know you mentioned that. But making sure that paraprofessionals, clerks, people at central office that have desktops all have some sort of mobile device in case they have to go mobile, because I know that, especially meeting some of our sped requirements, that the pairs are working hard to get that done, and they need those devices to do that. But I know that we're probably working on that. I guess I'm equally as concerned about the internet stuff, though, for the home.
So, great question, because I just spoke to Anthony today around, yesterday I actually sent them something around T-Mobile, around some grants that happened. We passed the deadline. But I do know that yesterday Comcast actually extended that agreement around access to internet. So I wanted to make sure it was Anthony's radar, so that families who have not participated within that six-month period that was released in the spring, it can actually now participate for that extended length that they're actually going to lift very soon for families. But the other thing is also looking for other opportunities, whether to revise in or sprint on hotspots. Like, that's a big thing, and making sure that we have that available to our families as well. So we are searching to kind of funding, but also opportunities where we can participate in possible initiatives with all of these providers around internet access and kind of really closing the digital divide. As it relates to the devices, that is another conversation we already had, we already had around, there are certain devices that are actually up, kind of in a sense, not that they're old, but they come, you know, the whole recycle around devices. There are going to be pretty new devices, three years old, that come off the lease agreement that can actually be repurposed for individuals who did not get a device, when we're talking about staff in the instance, March. And so allow students to actually get some, the part of, more of the new devices and teachers as well, but then other staff to kind of get pretty new devices so that everyone actually has a device and doesn't have to depend on a desktop or carry a desktop to go home to actually work remotely if we have to actually, you know, work remotely again.
So we're actually open now to like the Sprint and T-Mobile type of items? I thought like previously our, I don't know what he is, that our IT consultant, whatever he does, was not necessarily in favor of that. Has that shifted?
Well, I didn't hear, I mean, Mr. Soto didn't.
Not Anthony. I think it was Matt. Is that his name?
Yeah, it's Matt. But Anthony didn't mention anything relating to that. It was a service issue, other than the fact that we just passed a deadline for the grant by like one week. But I can check back with him, because it was more about infrastructure and making sure they have, if they were like a T-Mobile, if their phone was T-Mobile provided, they would get internet access with a hotspot for like, for free.
Okay.
I don't know about the infrastructure stuff, Mr. Shan. I don't. I can follow up.
Ms. Burks.
So I just, I'm curious to know if there's any other grant funding out there. I'm also curious, is this a conversation that the mayor can have with Comcast? Because we currently have a contract citywide with Comcast. You know, is there some way that that can be worked in there? Is there any other grant funding available? Because this is an equity issue that's concerning, and I want to make sure that we follow through and everybody has what they need. And, you know, on a side note, I want to give a shout out to the Transitions Program for their programming. That's going to be starting to go live tomorrow. They did an exceptional job. They worked really, really hard to make that happen and to be able to go live. And I would like them to be acknowledged and given credit for all the hard work that that program has put in to make that happen.
So, first question, as it relates to Comcast, that information only came like within the last twenty-four hours. So in working with Anthony, if I need to reach out to the mayor, I will if he requires that. I'm not sure if he got something as well as I did, you know, via email around Comcast and extending that opportunity for their program. But I did ask Anthony today to see, to reach out to kind of this contact in Comcast and see if there's any print material so we can provide to our families as it relates to kind of continuing the program, because they did extend the program. That I'm clear. The second question as it relates to the grants. So today, we received notification that we, that I asked my team to apply, and we worked on applying a grant around summer programming and summer initiatives. We were awarded immediately, I want to say, I got here, what, July, Erin? And we were awarded twenty-five thousand dollars as it relates to summer programming and initiatives for our students to use. We are finalizing a competitive grant of twenty-five million dollars that was released around technology initiatives for districts. And what we have actually proposed in that grant as it relates is the technology required for K-2, because K-2 students really don't do well when it comes to desktops and laptops. They really need a tablet to kind of, you do the manipulatives and kind of navigate the technology and really have access. On top of that is also the learning management software and portal that we would need for our students. One, for the students that might opt to go remote, because they feel uncomfortable or they have, they're medically fragile, so they do not want to come to school. But at the same time, it's actually also making sure that students who probably get sick, and because of the new protocols, they have to either be ten or fourteen days at home or quarantined, that education continues, they have access to their teacher and their lesson planning, or the lesson module while they're out. So as we embedded that into the grant request, we have to submit that in about seven days and looking for other opportunities as they come along and making sure that we can find other grants and opportunities to meet the needs of our students. So as they come in, you know, we are taking advantage of them, all these grant requests.
Yeah, I would just add, Doctor and Rebecca, that yeah, we're definitely on the Comcast, and we're going to continue having conversations. I know my office worked directly with them to make sure that they relaxed some of their rules, because they were disqualifying a number of our families that had debt. And so we were able to get them to scrap some of those rules, which not just benefited Holyoke kids, but kids in other communities as well. And I know the schools in partnership with the city agreed to provide internet, you know, pay the cost of Internet Essentials for any family that didn't have access previously at home. And so I know on the city side, we're willing to continue doing that. And we'll just continue working with the superintendent and his team, just to make sure. And the last thing that any family should be struggling with is access to the internet. And so that's of the utmost priority, even if it means reallocating resources within the Comcast contract.
Can I also add, this is Anthony, the remote learning grant that Dr. V was just talking about, we also included five hundred packages of internet through that Comcast Internet Essentials program. So that's going to be in the application. Currently, we only have seventy-five families participating in that program. But as part of that grant, we wanted to make sure that we had enough for the families that need and don't have internet. So that would cover them for the entire year for the Internet Essentials program that Comcast is offering for up to five hundred families.
Ms. Feliciano Sims?
No, thank you. I just wanted to readdress the mask issue. So my program, where we service individuals with disabilities reopened today. And what was really interesting, that some of my students only lasted two and a half, not even two hours with masks. And so we had to take mask breaks. Are there alternatives? Because I would hate for students to be penalized in not being able to go into school in regards to not being able to wear masks. So like for our company, we ended up purchasing a whole bunch of face shields, and we got it from the National Guard and stuff like that. Is there all their alternatives? Because like I said, you know, we do have students with a language barrier. So I want to be, again, talk about communication as a language barrier too, that those face masks with people with speech impairments or, you know, heavy accents can't communicate, so there's like other options. Just want to know, want to throw it out there so that we're aware that there's other options, and are we addressing those options also?
So is somebody going to answer that, or are we just nodding?
No, I just.
And can someone let Erin Brunel in?
Yeah. Erin, you want me to answer or you?
Please. I just want to know, like, to reassure families, I mean, we're on live stream. So one of the things I want to be reassured is that if your child does not, cannot wear a mask, are there other options, or are they going to stay at home and do remote learning? And that's, you know, that's a hardship, right? Like, we're talking about hardships, like families still have to go back to work. Parents just, you know, like, I tried to teach my niece and nephew some of the math stuff, and I was just like blown away. I was just like, man, I can't do this. So I just want to know, like, is there alternatives than wearing like a face shield throughout the day? And some of our younger students or our older kids, who do have those issues going on?
So we are looking at alternatives when it comes to that, right? So K-2 is not required to wear masks, right? So.
K-1.
K-1. Not required to wear.
Pre-K-1.
Not required to wear a mask. For other students, based on their individual needs, we would have to make the accommodations to meet their needs. Now, face shields is a question right now. Like, we are looking at the face shields as it relates to, you know, first, the accessibility of face shields. Like, that's not easy to purchase right now. But the second thing is, one of the things that we are intentional about is that we don't turn away a kid because they cannot wear a mask or they feel uncomfortable wearing a mask. So there are scheduled mask breaks during the day, not just for students, but also for adults. They also need a break. But then what do you do, right? What do you do if a student actually decides to take off the mask or cannot do with a mask? So providing kind of that professional development. So one of the things that we are looking at is actually the beginning of the year, using some of that professional development days of, well, how do you deal with a student who doesn't want to wear a mask? You don't, it's not something that you should punish them for, but how do you actually, do we have a separate room? Do we actually embed that in the curriculum around safety and hygiene? And how is it important to wear a mask? And why, right? Because it goes to my initial question in today's meeting around, we're so good at explaining how we're doing this, but we're not good explaining of why we're doing this, right? It's about caring for the other, caring for yourself, caring for abuela who is at home, who's probably ill and sick, and you don't want to, you know, and so forth and so forth. So how do we do a better job of educating our families and our folks on why we are making these adjustments and pivoting towards this direction? So we will make accommodations based on need. No one should be, unless we can, unless we can actually identify symptoms, no one should be actually be told, you can't come to school or you can't be part of class, right? And then if there is symptoms or a student actually expresses they're feeling ill, already what I can see in the guidance, we have protocols of what needs to happen, a wellness center where they go in. I see families are contacting, and we actually triage a student accordingly.
Okay. I know that before Ms. Brunel got kicked off, she had her hand raised. Erin, is that still true?
Yeah, so I apologize for asking a question that might be covered in the packet that I missed. But what is, what's the plan if somebody in the building does test positive for COVID? Like, let's say a teacher or a para or a student, like, what, like, who then has to quarantine for two weeks? Like, what is our, what is our plan? Because it's inevitable. So like, you know, I think our parents need to know coming to school that if, you know, cafeteria worker, let's say, who handled food for the entire building gets sick, everyone's expected to stay home and quarantine for two weeks. Or if it's, you know, a teacher that we can isolate, is their students quarantined for two weeks and everybody that they interacted with? Like, you know, at what extent are we taking that?
So we just got the guidance this weekend on each scenario and protocols. And we'll be sharing it with the committee and the public by the end of this week around various scenarios. And we have literally, there's about maybe eight scenarios in that document that will probably, hopefully will address your question.
All right. And then I had like a 45-minute conversation with my children's principal this week. And she's just expressing that, like, when will they know? Like, you know, we still have scenarios that, like, okay, here's A, B, and C. But like, at what point where will, and I understand, believe me, that it's really hard to be a genie in a bottle. I work in a very stressful job and I had to therapist my clients through a lot during all this. So I understand asking you to predict and give a date is a really hard thing. But if you could at least guess when our parents will know for sure if their student is going to school on the 31st and what that's going to look like. And not just our parents, but when will our principals know and our teachers know and our staff know? So that way, our staff, like, we might have a flux of staff that decides, this doesn't sound good enough for me. I may not return. Like, I can just, you know, I just, when? And I understand that's a really hard question, but when will we all know what the plan is?
No, so that's the question. So we just finished, we just closed the staff survey. So we're reviewing that data now based on scenarios. But the, I mean, the due date for us to publish what is the best, what will school look like in the new academic year is August 10th. That is, that is the day that, that, that we were given, that we need to publish our plan of how, what would school look like. Now, I have to say, to your point, Erin, this is fluid. Next week, some things might change. I'm going to be very honest. I am not, I can't forecast, like, things might change next week. I, so, but that's what we've received so far as guidance that by August 10th, we should be able to publish our plan to the community and to all stakeholders.
Okay. And then I just have one more question, if I may. If we were able to find ways to resource it, are we as a district open to providing a public, like, not a public, I'm sorry, that was the wrong word, an outdoor classroom space? Like, if a school's community can figure out how to make it happen, will the district allow it? Like, is this something that we could do? Can we, can we, like, you know, if the PTL raised enough money or if we got a grant or if we did this or did that, could we, you know, rent a tent that went outside? And so that way, while the weather's still good, we could utilize outside as much as possible, working that into the plan?
That's a unique question. I mean, it would depend of how long.
Because I can just foresee, like, you know, one of the, we want our kids outside as much as possible, right? We want fresh air. So like, you know, gym class, that should happen outside until the weather turns as opposed to in each individual classroom. Or just like, science could happen outside, but like, if there was, you know, if they're doing a science experiment outside, if we had like some kind of covering so that they weren't in the sun and that there was like tables and chairs to utilize out there, like, anyway, maybe you and I can.
Yeah, let's.
Continue that discussion, but.
Have a side chat about that because I would love to hear more about that.
Okay, I don't see any more questions from the committee. But my question's going to be in regards to your comment about attendance waived and lifted. Up to what point? What does that mean?
So that guidance is coming out this week. We're looking at the school year and actually attendance waivers. So you, everyone, we will be receiving that guidance this week. But the, there are going to be accommodations as it relates to the attendance requirements, but also looking actually at the academic year, the start and kind of the amount of instructional days as they're receiving feedback from superintendents throughout the state.
Okay. And then, so just to understand this better and so that families are understanding this, those that are watching. The problem is, is the length of time from when there is going to actually be a decision as to what's going to happen, okay? Or when things will happen. And things are always changing. But remember, the same doesn't go for those people who work. It's not like people can just go to their job and say one thing today, come tomorrow, now it's a different story and I still have my job. Okay? So in respect to students, in respect to students going back, okay? It's just, it's, it really is the amount of notice. This August 10th of when you're bringing scenarios and submitting it. I know that by the end of this month, you had to submit three plans. What it would look like in person, what it would look like as hybrid, and what it would look as full remote. Am I correct or am I wrong?
That's correct.
Okay, so by July 31st?
Correct.
And then you have until August 10th to go through the scenarios that Des, was it Desi who sent those scenarios? That if, you know, Bob goes to school and he starts showing symptoms, whatever the steps may be, what would you do? Who's gonna, who's gonna have to go into isolation or leave? How would you handle that? That you have until August 10th. Now, do you have to wait for approval from Desi that they think that your plan is okay and that you're minimizing risk?
No, between July 31st and August 10th, they will provide feedback of what is the most appropriate scenario and module based on the, on our submission. What we need to actually do is make sure that we finalize the details of the plan by August 10th. So if we say we're going in person and they were, based on kind of our initial completion of the template, they will say, this is the way Holyoke should be, should be moving towards. Or hybrid or a combination of both. We will have to complete the details and submit those details by the August 10th. But also let the public know, this is, this is, this is where we're going. So everyone would know by August 10th, what is kind of the approved plan.
So, but even though, even if you just, even if you say you're going in person, parents still have a choice on whether or not they're going to send their families. And, and they would, you know, fill out the form saying that I'm keeping my child at home for such and such a reason, whatever the case is. So that's fine. No, I kind of lost my train of thought here, but I'm going to ask you another one. Fall sports. Where are we with fall sports?
So I have not seen guidance come out in, other than kind of the contact sports not happening. So there, that's actually coming down the pipeline very soon. I can, I can follow up on that.
Okay.
The contact sports stuff, though, is only for summer. The governor's advisory only dealt with play in the summer. That didn't extend to the fall yet, so.
Right. And the fall is on, it's coming soon.
Okay. Now, now I'm recalling what I wanted to ask. Recess. Social distance recess. Would they be able to go outside and do social distancing? Or are they stuck in a classroom for all seven hours?
No, it's encouraged that they actually have some outside activities, but social distancing, right? And so that's what they're doing now during the facilities is where they're going to go. You know, what area will do we doing social distancing? And that's, and that can be part of the whole mask break as well. But they will have to, if they're not wearing a mask, they have to be six feet apart.
Okay. And you guys already know where you're getting your PPE from?
So we are, so we are actually, Anthony's on the line. But we actually have some companies that we've been kind of making sure that we have our, all our required PPEs ready for the start of school year. We were, we're good for the summer. And we're pretty much solid for the opening is making sure that we just continue those.
Well, especially with gloves and masks. So here's one of my concerns as someone who works in the healthcare industry. If we do end up going into, they say wave two, I don't even think we're out of wave one yet. That means we're going to be competing with the school districts and getting our PPE to protect ourselves and protect our patients. How fair is that? So I mean, that's just a comment for people to sit back and really think about it. Now, this is going to be a headbutting with healthcare agencies like myself. I work out in the community, so I'm a visiting nurse. I don't have, I had to go out and buy my own ponchos to serve as my PPE, my gown, when I was in contact with a COVID patient. I'm the one that's out hunting down N95s to buy them as well as gloves. We're going to be all fighting for something that we need to protect ourselves. At the end of the day, for what? So I mean, I don't know. I, I still think that this is going to be a hard one to really not break protocol and minimize risk. I am, you know, educators are, they went to school to learn about how to teach someone and educate them, right? But when it comes to nursing and when it comes to infection control and really following policies and procedures. Right now, our own district is so much on autonomy. Everybody does what they want for their own building because it's best. We don't have straight, straight policies and procedures for things such as this stating, everybody's going to follow the rules like this. So I'm hoping that when you develop those plans, what's good in one, one school is going to be the same thing in the other school. It doesn't veer off because somebody feels that that's what's best for their, for their school. Especially with something like this. That's all I have to say. Is there anything else that you were going through or did you touch base on all of that?
I'm done on my end.
Oh, the identification of student reps. Why I mention that is because typically we would, you know, by next month, that, you know, at the school, people would decide like who's going to be the student rep, whatever. How is that going to look like this year? Like, how, I really want student reps that are going to be there. They're really going to be advocating and doing, like, we really need to hear those voices. We really do need them a part of this committee. Not one day they're there, three months later, they're there. I want dedicated, dedicated people that are also representing all people, not just their beliefs.
So I did research that and my understanding, and Liz, I know you're on the line. But my understanding is we don't actually go into that cycle of selecting student reps until the school year starts.
Okay.
It would be appropriate, next, move it to next month.
Okay, great. So that was it? Dr. Vasquez Matos, for yours?
You get it, Ma. You want more?
I don't know. I'm just saying. Okay. Muchisima gracias. Thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and move on to new business, entertain a motion to accept the minutes of the public hearing and regular meeting of June 15th.
So vote.
There was second?
Second.
So I think I got the motion by Erin, seconded by Irene. So Liz, roll call, please. Yes. Mayor Morris? Mr. Fave? Yes. Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano-Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Wellenhend?
Yes.
Mr. Collmore is still with us and I'm going to guess he says yes. All right, awesome. So motion passed unanimously. Going on to nominations for president-elect of Mass Association of School Committees. So just a little brief overview on that. There's a position that was not, people did not apply for. And it's called the president-elect position for MASC. So now we have so far two people who are interested in running from the floor. So what that means is they've got to collect five nominations from, so one nomination for a total of five school districts. So one could be for us, another one could be Chickaby, so on and so forth, until they get five to then, to be able to run from the floor to fill that, that position. What that means is once they get the president-elect position in November, when we have our delegate assembly for the Mass Association of School Committees, that person will then start their title, I guess you would call it, on January 1st. They're president-elect. Then the following year after that, they would become president of MASC, of the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which is an organization that we are a part of. So with that being said, the two nominations that I have right now, two nominees that submitted their, their requests for a vote from us. One was Deborah Davis, who is currently the president of MASC at this very moment. But unfortunately, has not been able to really fulfill her, her position and really do it, what she wanted to do because of obviously the pandemic. So there were many of things, many events that we would have had by now where she would have been representing MASC. And unfortunately, all that has ceased to happen. So she's hoping to really have that chance to really show what she can do to move MASC forward. So I'm just going to read real quickly a brief bio that she had sent me of hers. She's a 24-year member of the Northeast Metropolitan Vote Tech School Committee. She has been a stalwart and effective champion for high-quality 21st century vote programs for all students. She's been a member of MASC Board of Directors since 2009, where she was elected as chair of the Vote Division and having previously served as its vice chair secretary. She's also served on several MASC committees, including resolutions and nominations, and served as a rep to the NSBA's, which is the National Organization's Federal Relations Network and the Mass Interscholastic Athletic Association. And she is currently serving on the Board of Directors of the MIAA. She has been on her school committee. She is currently serving as a chairperson and has also served as secretary as well as chair of its negotiation budget and Hall of Fame committees. And she is currently serving on the school building committee as Northeast, as Northeast looks to build a state-of-the-art Vote Tech school in the near future. That's the brief history on her. Then we have, so she's from Wilburn. And then we have Andrea Wadsworth, who's from the Berkshires. Andrea is currently a member of the Berkshire School Committee. If that's how you, I'm sorry, Devin, is it the Berkshire School Committee?
She's a member of the Berkshire County Education Task Force and the Lee School Committee and the Lee Tearingham Union 29 Committee.
Unfortunately, she did not send me a bio of hers where I can really, you know, focus on some of her, her, I don't know, accomplishments. She did, though. She did though, run in the New York, what was it, parade or something? The New York, what was that parade or?
The New York, sorry Mildred, we're all tired. The New York Marathon. She's currently Vice President for Finance and Operations of Berkshire Community College. Is that helpful?
That helps a lot, Liz. And Liz would know that because Liz is the, is kind of like our helper out here. So thank you, Liz, for that. So with that said, the little bit that I was able to share, do I entertain a motion from any school board member? Ms. Burks?
So I'll put a motion for the MASC nominee for president-elect to put forth Deborah Davis as nominee for the MASC president-elect position.
I'll second that motion.
All right. So we have a motion to move forward the nominee Deb Davis for MASC president-elect by Ms. Burks, seconded by Ms. Feliciano Sims. Can we get a roll call vote, please? Yes, you can. Ms. Lefave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Abstained.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Wellenhend?
Yes.
Mr. Colmore?
Yes.
Spiritually saying yes. All right, great. So we had one abstained, right? It was Mr. Sheen. Okay, great. So I will sign the paperwork. And Liz, I don't know, do I have to add a letter with this or a document stating that we, we met today? And we are, no, just fill out my MASC nomination form and we sign stating that the Holyoke School Committee met today and made it. Okay, great. So I thank you all, because you all look so tired, like I am right now. It's been quite a meeting. Hopefully, Dr. Alberto Vasquez Matos, my gosh, it's like a tongue twister for me. But anyways, it'll, it'll roll pretty soon on me. Hopefully you will be looking into that for the schools. We can hear more for the graduation for our students and making sure that our students get what they've rightfully been waiting for. So we can't wait to hear from that. And so with that being said, do I entertain, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Second.
So roll call, and I'm sure Liz is going to go real quick with this roll call. Ms. Lefave?
Yes.
Mr. Sheen?
Yes.
Ms. Brunel?
Yes.
Mrs. Burks?
Yes.
Ms. Feliciano Sims?
Yes.
Mr. Wellenhend?
Yes.
Mr. Colmore? Virtually, yes. So that, that was unanimous. Thank you, guys. Everybody have a good night. Meeting is adjourned at 9:32 PM.